Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this special Board of Education meeting, to be followed by a regular Board of Education meeting. And I'd like to make an announcement quickly first that if anyone would like to sign up to speak after the meeting, we're still putting signatures on the list, which is right outside. Yes, if you want to speak during the special Board of Education meeting. So I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. I'd like to thank our community partners and our community members for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank the administration for preparing this extensive presentation. And I'd like to thank Opel and the NAACP Education Branch for bringing these issues to light and to raising community awareness about this critical issue. Because I do believe that the more voices we bring to the table, the more perspectives we hear about our initiatives will help. Candace? You all right?
Yeah, I can't look this out. My chair just keeps going down.
Candace is feeling a little short tonight. All right, okay. So I think those are critical in figuring out how to solve these. So Ms. Shepherd came to our board meeting in December and asked some very explicit questions about Black student achievement. And this board meeting is really an attempt to answer these questions as transparently and as exhaustively as we can. But as we read the report, it also reminds us that there are many areas where further analysis would be very helpful to get at some root causes of some of our gaps. So Paul's going to give an overview later on of what the initiatives that we have underway with our strategic plan. But what I would like to do for just a moment right now is to give a board perspective on how we've been measuring the gap and talking about the gap and approaching the gap for the last several years. When I joined the board seven years ago, we had been measuring student achievement through the ISAT, and we'd been looking at the benchmark of meets expectations. And for those of you following this debate, that was a very low benchmark. And in fact, it was below grade standards. And the board, many times, were talking about how the gap is closing, the gap is closing. And in fact, about seven or eight, five years ago, we were saying most kids are achieving over 80 percent, were meeting our expectations. But what we came to realize is that we were not setting our kids up for success at ETHS because many of them were arriving at the high school feeling like they were on the path for success, and yet they didn't have some of the critical skills they needed. So the board went through a process of looking at the way we were measuring student achievement. And we have refined that to look at college readiness benchmarks, which are tied to the ACT, which is a benchmark for college and career readiness in the high school. The result of that is that our gap has grown considerably as we've redefined our benchmarks. And now we have a much larger gap than we did seven years ago, even though the achievement has remained very constant and the gap has remained very constant by other standards. So recognizing that these low expectations were hurting students, we did redefine our expectations because we do believe that high expectations, really, that every student can and should be able to succeed, and high expectations are at the heart of equity. The next area the board focused on is student discipline. We were worried about the disparities. Actually, Bonnie Lockhart was a big proponent of this, looking at major ODRs and suspensions. And we realized there were racial disparities in these numbers as well. And the board undertook to rewrite our policies. And we'll get into the numbers later on in the meeting. But what has happened is we've been able to reclaim a whole year of instruction for our Black students. And I know we have a long way to go in this, but we really are headed in the right direction. And we had a really good meeting last week on Monday night at the Policy Committee when we talked about writing an equity policy. And even though this board has felt like, in our long meetings late into the night, we've talked about issues of equity, if you turn on and you tune in, you hear us talking about the summer reading programs to address summer reading loss, we talked about community schools, we talked about culturally responsive instruction, we talked about our hiring processes to try to get more minority teachers. But we do believe that it's important to be more explicit about our equity policy and our commitment to equity. So that's something that's also in the works that we're excited about. And I think that the board, on occasion, has been criticized about as being defensive about what we're doing or not doing in terms of equity. And I list the things, this commitment we have to equity and the areas in which we're focusing on it, not because I think we're defensive about it. But I think what we need to do is set out for you all what our plans are so we can hear a critique, some concrete responses to our initiatives. And you can join in in either adding to these to see how we grow them or to set us in different paths if we're headed in the wrong direction. So tonight, I think, I've said it before, but we need the help of the community partners and community members to address these disparities which we should not, as a community, be allowed to continue any longer. The board views the achievement gap and issues of equity as the single most important challenge we face. And I would like to reiterate our heartfelt commitment to ultimately closing the gap.
Thank you, Tracy. And let me also extend a very warm welcome to all of you who are here tonight and those of you who might be watching at home as well. I'd like to thank the community group led by the NAACP who actually requested the meeting. With special thanks to Cecily Fleming and Martha Burns, who worked with me so that we could have a mutually agreed upon format for the meeting tonight, and to Teri Shepherd for coordinating the community request. I want to start on a personal note. We have to recognize the urgency of this work. And we need to, and I need to, act with dispatch. We also have to recognize that as we analyze and look at the information that we'll present tonight, the information that is in the report and will be on the slides, that this is much more than statistics, this is much more than numbers. As educators, as Evanstonians, as leaders, we are talking about our children. And we have to move with urgency and dispatch to meet the needs of our children, children who are Black, children of color, children who are striving to excel. I want to recognize as well that there are outstanding teachers, principals, and specialists in this district who are committed to making a difference to working with our children, Black children and children of color, and who deeply care and are committed to providing opportunities to learn that will improve overall outcomes and lead to success. Tonight, our principals are in the room. Our teachers are here. And I want to recognize that Paula Zalinski, who's the head of the district education council, Educators Council, is here. Specialists are here. Several of our early childhood providers are here. And that is a commitment that we have to address the issues and concerns that we bring before you tonight. I want to provide some context on how we, as a district, are recognizing the urgency and moving forward. The board and I are acting on our commitment through our strategic plan in its first year of implementation to address the needs of striving learners, to focus on literacy, especially at K-3, to develop culturally relevant and reflective teaching and learning tools, to promote safe and supportive school environments, especially through school climate teams that stress relationships between teachers and students, between teachers and administrators and families, to build a workforce that is more reflective of our student body, and to address the financial sustainability of the district so that we can focus on programs and programming that works. The board and I are also acting on our commitment to report data and information transparently, to hold the district accountable to decreasing achievement gaps by documenting the growth of all of our subgroups of students, and to work collaboratively with our community partners, from early childhood providers to Northwestern University, to the excellent partners that we have at YOU, YMCA, YWCA, Family Focus, the City of Evanston, especially our colleagues and friends at Parks and Rec and at the library. All of our actions and all of these actions lead to create better opportunities. Because if we can provide students with opportunities to learn, with access to educational success while not shying away from disparities in performance, we will address the concerns we are bringing forward today. Today, we present information on Black student achievement as requested. In August, we will report on our strategic plan outcome measures. And in the winter, in January, we will present our Achievement and Accountability Report that reports on all students, including Black students, Hispanic students, students of color, and white students. I see this meeting as fostering our continued dialogue and focus on Black student achievement through our presentation and through the dialogue that we'll have. And this is a dialogue that, one, is transparent. I will not shy away from data and have taken an unprecedented approach to admit our challenges, to lean into the discomfort of this data, these data, so that we can get to solutions. We are continuing a conversation that really started in November with the Joint 65-202 District Report of whether students are on track for success. This continued in December when we reported on the Park results and strategies we are taking to address student success. And then in January, when we released the preliminary report on Black student achievement, much of which we've now embellished in the report that we're presenting tonight. In February, we had a joint meeting of 65 and 202 where we focused on all of our students who are striving for excellence and better results. We are transparent with these data, and we will remain so. Our presentation is also asset-based. There are points in the data that show progress and growth. Here, it is important to understand the classroom practices of teachers, principals, and specialists, and the district programs and policies that contribute to such growth and thereby provide positive opportunities to learn. Our presentation is solution-based. We are focused on solutions embedded in our strategic plan that emphasize equity. These solutions represent a holistic approach to teaching and learning, school climate and culture, and the supports that students need to succeed, including, as I've just said, K-3 literacy, collaboration with our early childhood providers, our school climate work with our focus on the whole child and social-emotional learning, supports for children at key transition points, transition into kindergarten, the transition between third and fourth grade, transition into middle school at sixth grade, and that key transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, and intentional programming that we are working on to address summer learning loss, both at the district and with our community partners. And that leads me to our work must also be collaborative. We must own our responsibilities here at District 65. Let me repeat that. We must own our professional responsibilities here at District 65. Yet we know that we must also work with our community, with families, with social service providers, with the city, the university, and the faith-based community to make a difference in the lives of our children. With all of this lens, I want to jump into the data, the insights, and the action. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to Maria Allison, who has helped pull the presentation together to be able to frame the next steps that we're taking.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to apologize in advance for my voice. Can you guys hear me? I'm a bit under the weather, but so forgive the coughing, there might be a little sniffling. But, okay, so we just heard part one, welcome and introduction, from Paul and Tracy. And I'd just like to add my welcome to everyone here and to all those whose input and voice has led to having this conversation tonight. Tonight's presentation will have three more parts ahead of us. In part two, Data, Insights, and Actions, we'll present data on Black student achievement that addresses the specific set of questions that was raised in December. And our analysis will go deeper when we had additional data that allowed us to shed more light on the issues raised. From the... There is, it's fuzzy, right? That close you can't? And now it's getting more feedback. Okay. Is that better or worse? Better? Okay, thank you for telling me. Okay, so part one, Data, Insight, and Action. We're going to present data on Black student achievement based on the questions that were raised in December. Where we had more data that helped shed more light on the issues, we brought more data to the table, and we'll cover that. From that data, we'll share our thinking on where it should direct our attention and the actions that we have planned and are undertaking in response. For part three, we've invited a community panel to participate tonight to provide feedback and input. There'll also be time for public comment for those who have joined us here tonight. If you wish to speak and haven't done so already, we encourage you to sign up on the sign-up sheet outside. And also, for anyone who doesn't want to speak but wants to leave comments behind, we'll also pass out note cards if you'd like to use that to record some thoughts and leave those behind so that we can read your thoughts. If you'd rather do that than get up and speak, we're happy to hear from you that way as well. Lastly, we'll have some time for some closing comments from superintendent and board members. Okay, so now I'd like to just spend a brief moment giving an overview of the questions that we're going to cover through the data section. The original set of questions we received can be grouped broadly into four categories, focusing on early childhood education, on our core K-8 instructional program, on special education and school climate, and on other supports. And we've listed here on the slide the types of information that were requested within each category. For each of the broad topics listed, Peter Goddard is going to provide an overview of the key questions, then share some data in response to those questions, followed by key takeaways. We'll then hear from a range of colleagues who will speak to the work that they're doing in response and what those actions mean for students and families. So that little ticker at the bottom from overview to data to takeaways to action, we'll see that repeating as we go through each of the four main topics. And so before we dive in, I just want to call out one specific request, which is for data on Oakton School and the ACC program in specific. So there are school-specific data provided in the full report, but we're not presenting data program-by-program basis within Oakton tonight. That's because that analysis warrants a more in-depth conversation of Oakton and the planning process that's currently underway than we're going to have time to get to deeply tonight. We are more than happy to provide that data and facilitate that discussion. And I believe John Price and Ms. Shepherd have been in communication about what would be an appropriate venue to do so, where we'll really have the time to consider Oakton and the exciting planning work that's going on there. So I just wanted to note that as we go through all the data that was in the original request. So with that overview, I'm going to turn it over to Peter to start the data walkthrough.
Great. Thank you, Maria. Let me just make two logistical announcements before I dive into the data. First of all, if you're standing and you would prefer to sit, I can either ask folks to put your hand up if you have an empty chair next to you. And also, we do have an overflow room next door where we do have seating if you would prefer to sit there. The other thing I just wanted to note is as you came in, there were some PowerPoint slides printed out as well as full copies of the report. So if you didn't get one on the way in, I'd encourage you to pick one up on the way out. You may be able to see some additional analysis that we've included in the report that we weren't able to include in this brief slide presentation. And you may be able to also read some of the things in the PowerPoint that you may not be able to see on the screen. So with that, I want to just begin by giving you an overview about the students in our district and give you some context about our district before I dive into the four categories that Maria was talking about. Here you see a few facts about the students in our district. And what I would want to point out when we start is there are over 860 school districts in Illinois. And District 65 is rare among those many districts in terms of the diversity that our population represents. That diversity takes a form of not only racial/ethnic diversity, where we have three categories of students who make up 20 percent or more of our population, but also diversity in terms of income, ability, and language. We have more than 88 countries represented in terms of the country of origin of our students, and over 67 different home languages for our students. The other thing I would point out is that our mobility rate of 7 percent is also higher than many of our surrounding districts as well. So just interesting to have that context as we begin to look at these data. The other piece of context I would want to provide is about our staff. Our staff don't represent the full diversity of the students who are in our classrooms. Only 43 percent of our students are white, but 77 percent of our teachers are white. And we know and recognize the value of having our teaching workforce represent the diversity of the students they serve. And Beatrice will talk later tonight, Beatrice Davis, our Assistant Superintendent of HR, about some of the plans we have to address this issue. At the same time, just in terms of comparison, I would want to point out that our teaching workforce is more diverse than the candidate pool of certified teachers across the state that we have to draw from. So with that, let me dive into the first of the four categories that we want to cover tonight, which is about early childhood. And the framing question that we'll address in these next couple of minutes is what are the participation rates and outcomes for Black students in early childhood education for those entering District 65? Let me start with the outcomes, and we'll look at two different ways of assessing this. In both cases, we'll be looking at data from what we call the ISEL Assessment. That stands for Illinois Snapshots of Early Learning. And that's a test that we give to students during their first month here in District 65 in kindergarten. What happens is that the classroom teacher sits down with each of his or her students and does five one-on-one assessments. An example might be showing the student a series of alphabetic characters and learning which of those characters the child can recognize. So when we look at this data, what we've done is for the five different tests that the teacher gives, we look at whether the student is scoring at or above the 50th percentile across the state. And we aggregate that across the five different tests by saying that the student is at or above the 50th percentile on at least four of the five students. And this gives us a pretty good picture of kindergarten readiness in terms of literacy skills. A caveat I would give to that is obviously there are a lot of skills beside literacy that are important when students come into kindergarten. We don't currently have data to help us assess that across the district. And so this gives us a snapshot, knowing that there are a lot of other skills that we would need to assess in order to give a full picture of kindergarten readiness. That having been said, what we see is that 34 percent of last year's incoming Black kindergarteners were meeting this definition of kindergarten readiness and literacy. Let's look at the same data in a little bit of a different way. This is looking at students who enter kindergarten with a specific area of need. And what that basically means is that on one or more of those five tests, the student is scoring below the 20th percentile across the state. And so this is an area where the student will need some additional attention and instruction and opportunities in order to build the foundational skill in which they have a specific need. What we find in District 65 is among last year's incoming kindergarteners, four in 10 of our Black students had a specific area of need in one or more of the literacy skills. What I also want to point out here, and I'll talk about it a little bit in depth in regard to the early childhood data, but know that this pattern turned out to be true with all of the data that we looked at. And that is that there is a gap between Black and white students, both among those who live in a lower-income household and those who live in a higher-income household. It's actually more complicated than you would think in order to be able to analyze that in our district, and that's because of two factors. First, we only know whether a student qualifies for a free or reduced-price lunch or whether they do not. So that means we know that the household they live in earns less than 180 percent of the federal poverty line or more than 180 percent of the poverty line. And obviously, there's a lot of difference among families within those two categories about what their income is. So that complicates our ability to really tease apart race and income and their effect on student outcomes somewhat. And adding to that, what we see is that we have relatively few students of color, both Black and Hispanic, who live in higher-income households. And we have relatively few white students who live in a lower-income household. So those are caveats. You can read more about them in the report. And it makes it such that I can't run a scientific model that says X percent of the difference is based on income and X percent is based on race. Nonetheless, what we see with the early childhood data and all the other data that you can read about in the report is that race has a significant impact regardless of which of those two income categories a student might fall in, in terms of the outcomes that we observe for the students. So now we've talked about outcomes in terms of kindergarten readiness for pre-kindergarten experience, or for pre-kindergarten students. And the natural question that follows is so what experiences do our students have before they come to us with these different levels of readiness? What we observe and what we reported in the preliminary report back in January is that more than 95 percent of students, regardless of race, have some type of pre-kindergarten experience among the kindergartners entering District 65. However, when we break that information down based on the type of experience that they have, we see some differences between Black students and white students in our district. In particular, what we observe is that 75 percent of the pre-kindergarten experiences of Black students occur in one of two settings, either a daycare, which represents about a quarter of Black students, or right here at JEH and our preschool and Head Start programs. And that represents another 50 percent of our Black students entering kindergarten. In comparison, you can look at the data that we have here for white students, where you can see that nearly 70 percent of white students attend a private preschool. So very different locations in terms of where the pre-kindergarten experiences are occurring, despite the fact that both groups have a high level of participation. So that was a lot of information. Let me just summarize the three key things about early childhood that I think are most important to take away. First of all, reiterating what I just said, almost all, that's 96 percent of Black students, have some type of pre-K experience. Yet, Black students are less likely to attend a private preschool and are more likely to either attend preschool right here at JEH or a daycare setting. Next thing is about kindergarten readiness. About a third, 34 percent of Black students enter District 65 with literacy skills that we would categorize as kindergarten-ready. And lastly, the observed gap between Black students and white students exists even when we control for their free or reduced-price lunch status. So with that, let me turn it to two of my colleagues to talk a little bit about the actions that we're taking as a result of the data that we reviewed.
Thank you, Peter. There are several strategies and actions that we are taking to begin to address some of the concerns that are clearly highlighted in the report and that we've been aware of over time. First, we are working in partnership with Evanston Cradle to Career, JEH educators, and District 65 kindergarten teachers to create a kindergarten readiness document for educators primarily targeted for our kindergarten and early childhood educators, to provide guidance on skills to support a smoother transition from our early childhood providers to our kindergarten classrooms in District 65, and to support increased levels of early kindergarten success. The areas that are focused on in that document are social-emotional, cognitive, language, literacy, and math. As the data was shared tonight, we can see that literacy, early literacy indicators are incredibly important. But as many of our early childhood educators would communicate, social, emotional, and several other domains are really critical as well to that early kindergarten success. This document's being provided as guidance so we can work together with our early childhood providers to provide the best transition possible and increase kindergarten success. We plan to share this document and receive feedback from the Evanston Cradle to Career Blue Team and early childhood educators within the next month with the goal of having that document in place for educators as we enter this next year to support increased success in this area. Additionally, we've been working with, again, the Blue Team and Evanston Cradle to Career to increase the percentage of students that we have registered for kindergarten at an earlier date. The current goal is to have 100 percent of our kindergarten students registered by the beginning of June, with the exception of those students clearly who arrive in the district over the summer, and then we want them registered as soon as possible. The importance of having early registration is that these students need to become part of our kindergarten community prior to the first day. This is an important goal because we want every kindergarten student and family to be welcome and to feel as if they're part of our community on the first day. This means students and families have a chance to attend playdates with classmates before the first day. It means that students and families are able to meet teachers and school leaders before the first day. It means that students and families arrive on time the first day. And the name of that student is on a class list. They're able to get in line with their classmates, and they're able to see their name on their locker or their desk. It's an incredibly important, which maybe seems small, but incredibly important step to being an equal member of that kindergarten community from the very first day. So that work with Cradle to Career and increasing kindergarten registration is incredibly important. Additionally, we are working on program improvements at JEH. The team at JEH has begun work this year, actually developing a foundational understanding of a model and strategy called Conscious Discipline, with the goal of strengthening the social-emotional learning and focus at JEH. Over the past year, educators have been building this foundational knowledge with the goal of developing a plan for implementation over the summer and implementing this model and strategy in the upcoming school year. The goal for this strategy is to really, is to support students in, actually, is to build students' cooperation, constructive problem-solving, and academic success. Teachers are trained on how to take daily situations and daily conflict and help students understand how to navigate and problem-solve those situations, increasing the level of independence that students will have as they enter District 65 Kindergartens. Joyce?
So what are the actions that we're taking to better support families in our early childhood programs? We are aligning our work between our 0-3 early Head Start program and our 3-5 preschool and Head Start programming. This will allow for comprehensive and continuous social-emotional learning through the Conscious Discipline program and curricular interventions that will serve all students in our center here. We also will be submitting a grant application to Head Start in order to be able to provide additional full-time slots for children as well as provide them a wraparound service that they require. We are developing a cohort of... We are developing a cohort of outreach practitioners who work in our zero-to-three and three-to-five-year-old programming as family support providers. This is a dedicated group from the Evanston community who are committed to linking families with resources as well as improving our family engagement efforts. And we're also strengthening our transitions, not just between zero-to-three and three-to-five, but also in our transition with students from five to kindergarten age. And have included personnel from childcare centers in our transition meetings who provide wraparound support to those students so that we can communicate and provide those students with the best start possible in kindergarten. Peter?
Thank you. So a lot of information about early childhood. And now I'd like to transition us to the next of the four sessions, the second of the four sections that we want to cover tonight. And that is looking at the performance of students in kindergarten through eighth grade in our elementary and middle schools. So the two questions that I'll take in turn are first, what are the academic outcomes of students in grade kindergarten through three? And then what are the academic outcomes of students in three through eighth grade? And where I'd like to begin is by talking about our youngest students. I talked in the last section about the ISEL assessment that we give when students come to us in kindergarten. Now we're going to look at data from the DRA, which is the Diagnostic Reading Assessment, that we give several times a year as a formative assessment, including in the spring of kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. This is again a one-on-one assessment in which a student is asked to demonstrate their reading comprehension skills to their teacher based on passages of increasing complexity and difficulty as the student gets older and develops more skills. What you're looking at on this slide is the percent of students last spring in 2015 who met the benchmark that we've established at each grade level on the DRA. And what you can see is that the students who are both black and white are increasing in the percentage of them that are proficient on this assessment as the students move from kindergarten up until third grade. The gap between that two groups of students stays about the same size. But we do see progress being made, both in terms of the percent of students who are at benchmark and also keeping in mind that the benchmarks are getting more and more difficult as the students age. One caveat that I would like to just give you as you look at this data is that this should not be seen as a measure of college readiness, which we'll talk about when we look at third through eighth grade. We have done some research to look at the correlation between students obtaining these benchmark proficiencies on the DRA and their later having demonstrated on track for college readiness on the MAP assessment. And it's not a one-to-one comparison for a number of reasons, including the fact that the band of performance on the DRA at any given level is quite wide. And so within any given DRA scale, you have students who are at a lower end of that level and at a higher end of that level, therefore making it hard to do a prediction of future success on the MAP assessment. So take that as a footnote, but know that what we're, the takeaway here is really that we're seeing progress for both groups of students from kindergarten through third grade. Now moving on to our older students, I want to talk a little bit about how students are doing from third grade through eighth grade. I mentioned being on track for college readiness, which is one of the ways that we look at these data. But before I go to that level, I want to just look at the whole distribution of our students in our district and compare that to the distribution of students across the country. And so in order to do that, I'm going to look at some reading data from the MAP assessment. We're going to be looking at students all the way from third through eighth grade together. And the way that we've cut the data is to make five cuts of 20 percentile points each. So when you look at this chart, what you're seeing on the left where it's labeled one is what we would call the bottom quintile. That basically means the bottom 20% of students. In the national distribution, all the way up to the fifth quintile, which is the top 20% of students. And on this chart, you see a red line, which just marks the national norm, meaning that in the national sample, 20% of students are in each of these five categories. So next, we're going to take the same chart, and now we see the data for the black students in District 65. And what you can see here, first of all, that I want to point out is that we have many black students who perform in each of the different performance categories. They aren't clustered in any one particular performance band. We have a distribution of students. However, we see that compared to 20% in the national norm sample, only 9% of our black students are scoring in that top 20%. And then on the other end of the distribution, we have 25% of our black students who are scoring in that bottom 20%. And so what you can conclude from these data is that we need to accelerate the growth of our black students so that we're constantly moving toward more students being on the higher end of the distribution, meeting and exceeding what we would see in the national sample marked by the red line. For comparison, I've also included on this chart the same information about our black students in the dark blue bars. And then in the sky blue bars, you can see the distribution of our white students in our district. And so you can see in comparison, I mentioned before that 9% of our black students are in that top 20% of the nation. In comparison, we have about 60% of our white students who are in that top 20%. And then looking at the other end of the distribution, we only have 3% of our white students who are in that bottom 20% of the national distribution. So I guess one final takeaway about this that I would point out is that what we see in our district, as I mentioned, is the need to accelerate growth for our black students so that they're moving toward the right side of this graph. And not only so that they're in line with that red bar of the national distribution, but that they're exceeding that bar and moving more and more into that top, those top performance levels, which we see as possible, given the performance of many students, including black students in our district. So having looked at the overall distribution, let me share with you three statistics that are part of our strategic plan scorecard and our general reporting about our district performance that will summarize how black students are doing in grades three to eight. And the place I want to start is with our reading data and with the percentage of students who are making expected gains. So I mentioned several times already, we need to accelerate the growth of our students. This statistic looks at what percentage of students are making national norm growth from one year to the next. And what you see in reading is that black and white students are both making expected gains at about the same rate. But when we look at math in a moment, you'll see that the percent who are making expected gains in math is higher. And so that's one proof point of we can move our expected gains in reading as fast as we're currently moving them in math. And that will help more and more students meet the levels of readiness that we're looking for. The other two pieces of information you see on here are two ways of summarizing what I talked about on the previous slide. You see the percent of students who are below the 25th percentile, which is most of that first category or all of the first category on the previous slide, plus a little bit more, so the bottom 25% of the national sample. And you can see that about a third of black students are falling in that category in reading. And then last, we're presenting here data about students meeting the college readiness benchmark, which Tracy mentioned in her comments at the beginning about the level of proficiency that we've adopted in District 65 being one that is quite high. According to that very high definition, we see that about two in 10 black students are on track for college readiness. One caveat I would like to put out about this data is that I'm demonstrating the results based on 2011 benchmarks that the board has adopted as part of its strategic plan scorecard. We will have an update in August, as was mentioned previously, about how our students did this most recent school year. And at the same time, we'll be bringing to the board a recommendation to adopt new benchmarks that were published by NWEA, the test vendor, last summer. Those benchmarks fall at a little bit lower percentile cut point. And it means that nationwide and here in District 65, we would see that more students are proficient. Just to give you a sense, looking at these reading data, about 10% more black students and about 10% more white students would be proficient according to that definition that we would look to adopt later this summer. I won't pause long here on the math data, except to make two observations. One is that we see that fewer students, both black and white, are meeting college readiness benchmarks in math. And a lot of that has to do with the very high threshold that's been set for the benchmarks using those 2011 norms. I would also point out that you will see that a very similar percent of black and white students are making expected gains. And that that percent making expected gains is about 10 points higher than what we're seeing in reading. One final piece of data that I want to share with you, based on the community request for information, is how the MAP data that I've just been talking about correlates with student grades. And so for this analysis, we're just looking at our middle school-aged children. And that's because we only give letter grades in our middle schools. And our elementary schools will use standards-based grading. In order to give you a sense of how grades and MAP score achievement correlate with one another, we have broken our students into four categories. On one dimension, we've broken it based on black students and white students. And on the other dimension, we've broken it based on those who are below the 25th percentile and those who are meeting the college readiness benchmark. What you see here is that for both the lowest performing students and the highest performing students, the average grade received for black students is lower than the average grade received for white students. A couple pieces of information to share with you about why that, part of why that may be the case is first that there's a difference in test scores within those categories. So just as an example, among students who are above the college readiness benchmark, the median percentile score for black students is 77th percentile compared to 89th percentile for white students. And that may partially explain why we're seeing difference in the grades that the students are receiving in their English Language Arts class. The other thing I would like to point out for you is just that when we look at white students below the 25th percentile in middle school, we're only talking about a group of 21 students. And so that's a very small sample size and really hard to generalize and make a conclusion from. So again, quite a bit of data to share with you about how our students are doing from kindergarten through eighth grade. But let me take a stab at summarizing a couple takeaways about this information. First, in regard to kindergarten through third grade, most black and white students develop from pre-literacy skills that were measured on the ISEL in kindergarten to an independent reading level in grade three. Second, during that same time, the overall racial gaps in achievement stay the same size. So everybody's growing, but not enough to close the achievement gap that we see when students arrive. And then also, I want to point out that during that time, the overall racial gaps, I'm sorry, the gap, one thing I didn't mention when I looked at the slide earlier is what's happening between our kindergarten-ready students and our not-kindergarten-ready students. So I mentioned the gap is staying the same size. That's true overall. But when we look at our kindergarten-ready students, what we're seeing is that the size of the gap is decreasing between black kindergarten-ready students and white kindergarten-ready students. Whereas among those students who come in who are not kindergarten-ready, we see a widening gap as the students age. Then, turning to grades three to eight, I think the highlight here is that black students and white students are making expected gains at nearly the same level. So both are making growth from one year to the next. However, that growth is not big enough to close the gap that we see. So from grades three to eight, 10% of black students are on track in math and 20% in reading. And the growth that we're seeing, although it is on par with the national norm, is not enough to close the gap and bring more black students to that level of college readiness. At the same time, we see that a third of our black students from third grade through eighth grade are falling in the lowest quartile in both reading and in math. So with all of that data, let me turn it over to my colleagues to tell you about the action.
The gaps are present in kindergarten and persist across grade levels. But expected gains are similar. Our focus needs to be on accelerating progress for black students. We will accelerate growth for students not yet at benchmark by setting and communicating high expectations for all children. There are specific strategies that educators can use to set and communicate those high expectations. We are sharing those strategies across the district with principals, assistant principals, and teachers. We will differentiate instruction to challenge students and provide all children with rigorous learning. We will work to instill in our staff and in our students a growth mindset. We are intentionally changing the climate of our classrooms to support high expectations for all students. Families of black students can expect to see a curriculum that reflects their children's identities and experiences. Families can expect a welcoming and engaging climate in each classroom, in each school, and in the district office. One specific strategy that we are using is executive functioning, a set of planning and thinking skills needed for academic and life success. We will be implementing executive functioning supports so that children are able to deepen their learning skills. Executive functioning will increase success of our students and empower our students to take ownership over their own learning. Also, we are focusing on formative assessments. We will spread the use of authentic and aligned assessments that will tell teachers, families, and students if they are on track in their learning. Families can expect to see specific information about their children's strengths and opportunities for learning. Improving formative assessments will help us to accelerate the learning for black students. Stacy?
Thank you. The district recently finished developing a kindergarten-through-third-grade literacy framework that increases the call for challenge and consistency with the goal of accelerating growth across district classrooms. This framework will lead to stronger reading instruction. It will build, it will, it will balance building consistency across classrooms while building in more differentiated instruction to meet the needs of the range of learners in our district. The foundation of the framework is strong literacy practices, in addition to the integration of ideas of culturally relevant pedagogy and growth mindset. Our students will see themselves and who they can become in our literature. Our students will experience success by achieving relevant challenges. Our students will question, challenge, think critically, and analyze text and engage with peers and teachers about that text. It means your students will experience opportunities to develop and practice reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills as they develop the power of discourse. In addition to the literacy framework, the district's been moving, has been improving our targeted supports and interventions for students below the 25th percentile. We refer to this as Response to Intervention, RTI, or MTSS. The districts and schools, specifically principals, teachers, and student support staff have been working closely to achieve the goal of having an intervention plan in place for every student below the 25th percentile. Additionally, we're paying increased attention to monitoring those student support plans to ensure that if those plans are not in fact working to help accelerate the growth of our learners, that we're adjusting those plans and working to find the right set of interventions to support increased success. Lastly, the district has been working to increase two-way communication with the families in our district. Specifically, we've been working on making sure that there's a clarity of communication about a student's progress. We're committed to continuing and expanding this work. In addition to, we are investigating new ways to increase two-way communication because we know that we need to have information going out, but we, we need to have a strong partnership with our families and have that information coming back so that we can best support the success of our students throughout the district. Peter?
Thank you. So we've looked at early childhood. We've looked at what's happening in terms of...
Oh, I apologize. Sorry. Jamila's now going to speak about African-centered curriculum.
Thank you, Stacy. So in 2015, Dr. Goran asked me to support the African-centered curriculum at Opton School. And so I have had the great privilege and responsibility to take up this mantle for this very unique program. Earlier this year, we collaborated with Lincolnwood School, who was bringing in Andrel Davis, who has expertise in culturally relevant pedagogy because she does, plays that role in Wisconsin. And she suggested to us to use Peter Murell's text, "African-Centered Pedagogy", as the foundation. And we have taken that up as the foundation for the instructional design because it is the research-based approach that we've been seeking. His work identifies five essential practices for an African-centered curriculum. Engagement and participation practices, identity development practices, community engagement integrity practices, inquiry, and meaning-making practices, all five. So a large part of our work this year has been to be intentional about how we're including that in our instructional planning. So layered with these practices is the work that our new principal, Wayne Williams, has been leading with the entire school, integrating the Teach Like a Champion strategies in our practice. And those resources emphasize things like begin with the end in mind, no opt-out, and every minute matters. So one example would be in our morning routine in the exploration of the virtue of harmony, one of the seven principles, we applied this concept to collaborative problem-solving, a disposition that we're developing in the students. We created K-2 groups and 3-5 groups. We created K-2 groups and 3-5 groups and posed a problem for them to solve from a real-world experience and charged the groups to work in harmony to find a solution. So of course, the students are engaged and participating in this, in this small group task. The task was identified from a real-world experience. The students in 3-5 had recently been on a field trip, and so we used something from that experience. Working in cross-grade groups builds community across the classrooms. And of course, the inquiry and meaning-making was embedded in the problems that they were trying to solve. And one of the, one of the best benefits that we've had using our morning routine for these kind of collaborative explorations is that we get to implement our collaborative planning in a venue where we can observe one another and give feedback to one another about how well we're integrating those five essential practices for African-centered pedagogy. And I'm going to toss it to Fred Hunter, who's going to talk about their work at Lincolnwood.
All right. Good evening and stated, my name is Fred Hunter, and I'm very excited to be here tonight. And I want to thank the community for asking for this forum and again, for the board agreeing to have this forum. Again, I'm excited to talk to you about the work that we're doing at Lincolnwood. Pedro Nigaro said, "There are many ways to change the world." And I believe that the work in which we're barking on at Lincolnwood is life-changing. I'm very thankful as far as to our, our staff at, at Lincolnwood that is on this journey with me. Very special thanks as far as to our school improvement team and our PTA that supports us in this work. Culturally relevant teaching is a practice that has been identified as a method as far as to increase the academic outcomes of minority students. However, I think it's important for me to note that culturally relevant teaching is good for all students. When we reviewed our data, we noticed our data was similar to that of the district, of the districts in that our African-American students were not performing at a high level on standardized tests. There was a substantial difference in test scores between African-Americans and white students. And these students shared the same classroom. We also looked at our ODR data, which was mentioned before, and our African-American students make up roughly 25 to 28% of our population, given the different years. But we also, we noticed that they made up over 70% of our ODRs. So we knew at this point, we had to do something different. We couldn't continue to do the same thing and expect to get different results. So we sought in order to, we sought to make changes. And we looked at not just structural changes, structural changes, but cultural changes. So along with the central office, we began to research strategies in schools that was actually making a difference. During this time, I learned about community schools. I actually had an opportunity to visit Harlem Children's Zone and meet with Jeffrey Canada as they were opening a $3 million, a $30 million facility in the middle of the projects in New York. We studied Carol DeWek, Alfred Tatum, Pedro Nigaro, Geneva Gay, Lisa Del Pet, Yvette Jackson. I mean, the list goes on. Linda Darlin Hamming, Martin Haberman, Jawanza Kanjufu. And one of the things that kept showing up in the research, in their research, is an element of culturally relevant teaching. And so we decided that this would be what we would do as far as to move forward in implementing culturally relevant teaching. I will say outside of the literature, I also had the opportunity to study and interview two teachers here in the district, one white, one African-American, here within our district, was noted for their ability to move African-American students. So not only did we have the literature, but we also had practices that were taking place here within our district. And what we noticed from those teachers is again, they were implementing elements of culturally relevant teaching. So what is culturally relevant teaching? Culturally relevant teaching is a term created by Gloria Lasson Billings to describe a pedagogy that empowers students intellectually, socially, emotionally, and politically by using cultural references to impact knowledge, skills, and attitudes. Participating in culturally relevant, culturally relevant teaching essentially means that a teacher creates a bridge between a student's home and school life while meeting the expectations of the district and state curriculum requirements. And so it was one of the pieces that we really liked about culturally relevant teaching is having those high standards and having that academic push. So according to Gloria Lasson Billings, there are three pillars of culturally relevant teaching, and that is academic achievement, which looks at student learning. Then the second is cultural competency. And then the third is critical consciousness. So when we look at academic achievement in students, we're looking at the skills teachers, teachers have to scaffold their instruction to, to create an opportunity for students to experience academic success. Educators, excuse me, educators are committed to knowing their students well academically, socially, and emotionally. They have high expectations. They build positive relationships with their students. The second piece along with, which is the cultural competency piece, is students are encouraged to be themselves. When they come to school, they're not encouraged to act or be different. They're encouraged to have that cultural integrity, helping students become multicultural or bicultural, utilizing students' culture as a vehicle for learning. And Stacy mentioned, mentioned some of that in her presentation. Utilizing students' culture as a vehicle for learning, providing students with curriculum that builds on their prior knowledge and cultural experience. Utilizing parents and family members as a resource, valuing students' home culture, and helping students bridge between home and school. A lot of times, we talk about or having a conversation, there's a way in which you speak at home, and there's a way in which you go if you're having an interview. And so helping students distinguish the difference, but respecting both. Teachers, again, help students to code-switch. One of the pieces, the third piece, the critical consciousness, is usually a piece that's left out when you talk about culturally relevant teaching. But Gloria Lasson Billings would argue this is just as important, and it's important for all three of these to be apart. And this is teachers and students engage in a collective struggle against the status quo. Students develop a broad, a broader social-political consciousness that allows them to critique the cultural norms, values, morals, and institutes that produce and maintain social inequities. So what have we done? And so again, we're on this journey, and I would say we're, we have a long way to go. But again, I'm very happy to be with a group of educators that are embarking upon this journey. And what Gloria Lasson Billings would also say is that teachers were not trained to meet the demands of our present classrooms. And so it's no knock as far as on our teachers. And so we're trying to educate them on a way in order to be able to meet the needs of our present, demands of our present classroom. And so we had the wonderful opportunity to read the book, do a book study on Carol DeWek's book. And again, when we talk about a cultural change, this is very important because it's important for us as the adults to have a growth mindset and not be fixed, not just for our students, but it's, it's important for us as well to be, have a growth mindset and know that our practices can change and our students' outcome can change as well. And so we had, we partnered with a professor from National Lewis, Dr. Lopez. And along with our IOT, IOT team, we created a survey. And this survey looked at our beliefs and values versus our practice. And what we realized is that we had certain values, but our practices did not align as far as with those values. And so again, we're looking to make practice changes to align what we say that we value and have that showing, showing up in our classroom. We attended national conferences. We also did the book study with Gloria Lasson Billings' book, "Dream Keepers." And in that, we really learned how the people that she identified as being able to move minority students, what are some of the things in which they do? We did, as a staff, we did an off-site staff visit, or we had a, our meeting off-site. So we went to tour the Fleetwood Jordan Center and also meet with the members at, at Family Focus. It was interesting, a lot of our students were, our students come from this area. Our students, our African-American students come from this area, but a lot of our teachers had not been in the area. And so it was a very eye-opening experience as far as for our teachers. We had guest speakers. We had Dino Robinson come in from Shorefront to teach about the African-American's experience on the North Shore, again, exposing our staff to the great rich history that African-Americans have here in Evanston and on the North Shore. We had the wonderful privilege to partner with Dr. Logan, who came in and did diversity training. And he did this, actually started with our students and then came the next year and did diversity training with, with our staff, which was received, and it was eye-openers, it was an eye-opener for us to learn about our biases and the things of which we bring in the classroom and how that affects student learning. And he also helped us see how culture impacts learning as well. Something else I wanted to say, let me leave that alone. In like of, in due of time here. I did also want to note, at that time, the PTA council was sponsoring the navigating diversity. And so Lindsay Ryan, along with Dr. Logan, was leading this conversation. And so some of our parents attended these meetings. And out of that, we developed a group at our school called Community Builders. And so the focus of that group is really as far as to make Lincolnwood School a welcoming environment as far as for all of our families. This year, and there's a few other things we can add in there, but this year, we were happy to have Andrelle Davis come. And so we, we did a lot of book studies. We gained a lot, a lot of knowledge, but our staff, in listening to them, we want to see it. We want to see what it looks like. And so Andrelle Davis came, and she is, Andrelle Davis, she's a veteran educator who is currently responsible for overseeing and implementing culturally relevant, culturally relevant teaching practices for the entire state of Wisconsin. And so she came in and did a demonstration as far as what culturally relevant teaching will look like as far as in a classroom. And I'm very happy to report that we were able to open this up, and we had members from central office attended and also members from other schools. And so from her presentation, there's some practice changes that we were able to take away. And that is the increase of diverse literature, trying to figure out ways in which we can help students see them, their possible selves, student affirmations, having students create short and long-term goals, utilizing rhythm and songs into our literature practice, utilizing storytelling and proverbs, building home and school connections, having morning meetings, the use of fiction and nonfiction literature, using popular songs again to be able to help students connect. And so those are some practices in which we began to, to implement as far as this year, and the students are, and our staff are, are reporting positive changes. Our staff also read the book, "Why Race and Culture Matters in School: Closing the Achievement Gap in America's Classrooms," by Tyrone Howard. And with this, our staff, each grade-level team took a chapter and presented it. And that was a very powerful learning for us and even giving us a historical background of how we got to where we are. So from that, teachers have created lesson plans that have culturally relevant practices. Teachers have also gone into other teachers' classrooms, doing peer visits, visits to observe their colleagues teach. And so we're working together to help each other get better. We also partnered with Books and Breakfast because we realized our teachers can't do it alone, and our parents need support. And some of, you know, some people, when you talk about the achievement gap, they'll say it's not an achievement gap, and we saw it on the slide, it's an opportunity gap. When you look at the difference of students that are able to go to private daycare compared to some of our students. So we felt Books and Breakfast would help in giving students an opportunity and helping them be better prepared as far as to start their day with a healthy meal, with homework support, in a very supportive environment. And they also believe in culturally relevant teaching. And so we're very excited about that. And we also have continued the Smart Start Program. And that's where on an evening, our students and their parents come in, and they're able to learn from our teachers the great things that happen in the class and which the parents can do those things at home. And we were happy to host that this year at Family Focus. And so a great turnout there. And we also have the Learning Plus that we do. And within our Learning Plus, we are actually implementing culturally relevant teaching strategies. And it has made a huge difference because the students are able to relate to the literature, and so they're more engaged. And so even though we have a long way to go, our teachers are, are reporting progress.
And as we make the segue over back to Peter, thank you, Fred. Fred and I have been working with Dr. Lasson Billings, and we have a request, and she's tentatively said yes, although I have not confirmed it, so I can't promise it, but to potentially come and kick off the school year next year as our keynote address. So we're, again, we, the deal isn't cut yet, but we're, we're trying to work with Dr. Lasson Billings so that she could actually be here addressing all of our teachers and administrators and on campus.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hunter and Dr. Pitts, and apologies for jumping all over your headline there. Let me move us next to our third of four topics. So we've talked about early childhood. We've talked about K-A education. And now I want to shift our conversation to special education and school climate. In the community request for information, the question that was posed had to do with how many black students and what percentage of black students had IEPs, or Individualized Education Plans, for students with disabilities, for certain disabilities, and we'll get into that. But in the information request was also some, some hint that emotional or problems or issues related to discipline were also of interest. And so I've included some data in these couple of slides that we will look at, and certainly we'll hear about school climate teams in a minute. And I know this is similar to data that they also are reviewing. So let me start with the couple of pieces of information I want to share about special education. The two disability categories that come closest to those asked about in the request are developmental delay, which is for our young children up to nine years old, and also emotional disability. And as we look at this chart, what I first want to point out is we're talking about a very small number of children. We have over 7,000 children in District 65, and of those, only a little over 100 have an IEP where a developmental delay is identified, and less than 50 have an IEP where an emotional disability is identified. So overall, a fairly small number of children. That having been said, what we can do here is compare the percent of black students who have these different categories on their IEPs to the district population. So about 23%, a quarter of students in District 65 are black. And if we look at a student whose IEP identifies developmental delay, we're talking about 40% of those IEPs are for students who are black. And looking at students with an emotional disability, we're talking about 49% of those students with an IEP are black. Now let's look at two pieces of information that relate to discipline policies in District 65. And so I want to begin by looking at office discipline referrals, call these ODRs, and Mr. Hunter spoke about these a few minutes ago. What we have here are ODRs for a major incident. And so in our, in our system of tracking these beh... And so in our system of tracking these behavioral incidents that occur, the incident is recorded as either minor or major. And we lift up the major incidents largely because we know that there's more consistent tracking across schools of incidents of this type. Whereas with the minors, different schools may choose to focus on cataloging a particular minor behavior in a particular year because they're just trying to understand what's happening with that behavior. Whereas major incidents tend to get tracked consistently over time and across schools. So what you'll see when you look at these data is that there has been a small decrease in the percent of Black students who have one or more ODRs for a major incident between 2012 and 2015. And that in the last complete year of data that we have, about 5 in 20, a quarter of our Black students received one or more office discipline referrals over the course of a year. And you heard Mr. Hunter talk a little bit in his school about how that played out into what they analyzed. In comparison, you can see that 2 in 20 students across the district overall receive an ODR and 1 in 20 white students receive an office discipline referral. And the last piece of data I want to share about climate is in regard to our suspensions. We in District 65 have had a policy called Alternatives to Suspension in place for a number of years. But a couple of things happened in the most recent couple of years that has really led to a substantial change in the number of suspensions and the number of suspension days per 100 students, which is the statistic that you see here that are occurring. The first of those changed, changes relates to improvement in the implementation of the alternatives to suspension policy. And that really occurred as a result of the push by the District 65 Board to really be sure that alternatives to suspension were offered in every single case where a suspension was occurring. The other thing that has happened is that our administrators in our schools, our principals and our assistant principals have really made changes in the way that they are handling these suspensions and making sure an alternative to suspension is offered in all cases and that positive approaches to a behavioral incident are occurring more and more often. And so what you can see in this most recent year is a real change in the data as a result. Between 2014 and 2015, you can see a precipitous drop in the number of suspension days per 100 students for Black students. And you can also see a drop in the overall percentage for the district. Despite that decrease, we still do see that more suspension days per 100 students are occurring for Black students as compared to white students, with 10.4 days per 100 students occurring last school year.
Peter, you may want to move the microphone closer.
Oh. Sorry, if you weren't able to hear that, I apologize. And with that, let me turn it to my colleagues to talk a little bit, or let me summarize the takeaways first and then I'll just share it with my colleagues. So in regard to these questions, three main points to take away. First, in regard to students with an IEP that identifies a developmental delay, of our 177 students who have such an IEP, 70 are Black. In regard to students with an IEP related to an emotional disability, of those 55 students, 27 were Black. And then in regard to the office discipline referral data and our suspension data, you can see that there was a decrease in the number of students with ODRs and the number of suspension days for all students over these last years. However, 5 in 20 Black students who received an office discipline referral for, 5 in 20 students who are Black received an ODR last year, and there were 10.4 suspension days per 100 Black students in the most recent year. So let me turn it to Joyce to talk a little bit about our actions.
So what are the changes that parents are going to see in our schools? We, this is our first year's work with school climate teams. In six schools this year, there are teams of staff whose work together is to support and improve relationship building. And we're looking at relationship building in terms of student-to-student relationships, staff-to-student relationships, staff-to-staff relationships, and staff-to-family relationships. Teams are working to develop an action plan to develop and implement different kinds of goals to address those relationships and to improve their work with everyone within their school community. One of our goals is for this work to use the data that individual schools have to specifically address issues related to disproportionality in discipline and in special education. Karen Bradley, principal of Dawes School, is here tonight with two of her staff people to talk a little bit about school climate teams. I want you, can introduce your staff?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about the work we're doing in terms of school climate at Dawes School. We started this work close to a year and a half ago now, and we were really diving into some questions. And we were thrilled when the strategic plan included some outlines for this work and some district supports for this work. The district supports have given us a framework for organizing our discussion and our work plans. They've given us guiding questions and toolkits to work from. And it's really been very challenging work. It's been very deep work. We've had a dedicated team, a diverse team at Dawes working on this, diverse across roles in schools and across, in the school and across backgrounds. We've engaged in some significant PD and diversity training this year. But for this work to be authentic, it really has to come from the staff. And so that's why I have two of my colleagues here tonight to discuss some of the specifics of what we've been working on. With me tonight is Maria Torres, who is our kindergarten, one of our kindergarten teachers, and Raquel Galan, who is our school psychologist. And they're going to talk a little bit more in detail about exactly what we've been working on in the area of relationships at Dawes. We've been using a structure to examine the four relationships that Joyce just mentioned, a structure that asks us to look at what do we want to stop doing in our practice? What do we want to start doing in our practice? And what do we need to continue? What's in good shape in our practice? So I'm going to ask Raquel to take over from here.
Thank you. So why we are working on this, sorry. Thank you. Can you hear me now? Yeah. So why we are doing this work? So there is plenty of research out there, part of the, the, sorry, the district. Okay, sorry, I'll start again. So students and staff need to feel comfortable in a school, comfortable coming to enter the classroom every day. There is plenty of research out there that shows the direct correlation between learning and emotional well-being and the sense of belonging, having the feeling that your teacher wants you there and what you were talking about, the mindset, that your teacher believes in your ability to achieve great things. This is a very obviously a diverse community and that has, comes with great richness, but also requires very intentional and targeted work to achieve the goals of everyone feeling comfortable and successful in a school. So when we came to study our committee, we were not operating from our emotions, so from a particular incident or particular parent comment. This has not been improvised, it's been data-driven. Some of the resources we have used to analyze our strengths and our areas for growth at school, having the PBIS data, also the Five Essential Survey, and also a survey that we designed as a school to detect what are the areas that our teachers feel very comfortable and our staff, also custodians, teacher assistants, feel very comfortable addressing. And I would say not only in regards to, in this race, but in regards of gender or different learning needs, a wide spectrum of variety of learning learners. So I have to say that at Dawes, we have qualitative and quantitative indicators that the school climate, we already have a lot of assets and we are building from there. But also we have analyzed areas for growth. And this year, we work on developing better understanding of relationships and we have broken this down into four different areas. One is adult to adult, and when I say adult, again, I say everybody that comes to work at our school every day. The secretary, the custodians, teacher assistants, certified staff. Also students to students across grades, also relationships adult to students, and also super important, our relationships school to family. The outcomes that we are starting to see and obviously will see as we move forward more clearly, is an opportunity for open dialogue and this is something we are more seeing among our committee yet. Also increased awareness of own biases. We have to not be afraid of stepping out of our comfort zone and identify own biases, own assumptions, also knowledge of strengths and areas of improvement, and also try to get to know families and our students as a whole with the different context of other perspectives and realities. And also reflection of all this knowledge that we are gaining. Also, as a school, we are seeing already an increased understanding of a child as a whole. We cannot describe any student's needs only under one category, either a special ed or either a race. And also developing of work plans to improve our climate within our school. And Maria is going to talk a little bit more about specific examples of how those plans look in the, for different categories.
So during our time together, we've had some very rich conversations, but we wanted to prioritize the areas of opportunity, focusing on students, families. We looked at the PBIS data very closely, and that's an area that we're going to focus on in terms of developing a comprehensive definition of what bullying is or what these behaviors are so that the application, and then communicating that understanding to all staff so that we are looking at all students through the same lens and not, so that we have consistency as we are applying these or issuing ODRs. The family connection, sense of belonging, that's another area. We have very different programs in our school and we want to make sure that we create synergy within those programs and that all teachers and staff understand we have the TWE program, we have self-contained classes, we have inclusion. And as a staff, we want to make sure that we're understanding everything that's going on in the classroom so that we can communicate that to our students and our students can be more understanding of each other so that we can create a safe environment for all students. Our families, we have a lot of adversity in our school and we've recognized areas that we can change and highlight. And so we've talked about finding different ways and diverse ways to invite the families and having a variety of options for families to come in and visit working families and everything. And increasing family involvement, not just through the standard PTA or performances or just having staff and teachers create opportunities for families to participate in a variety of ways. We've talked about including students and families to create welcoming committees for new families.
So our next steps, the whole child council, as they guided the work of our committees, recognized that the relationships are obviously at the foundation of all the work we do. And this wasn't a one-year endeavor. So we've lengthened the timeline and we'll be spending the next six months really working on organizing our work teams to be very specific and intentional in the work that we're doing. So when we talk about a welcoming committee, what would be the five things they hope to accomplish in a year and what are the timelines and who's going to be responsible for that, et cetera, on each of the different work plans that we've outlined. We just had the opportunity to roll the committee's work out to the staff last Thursday and it was very, very well-received. Teachers had a chance to give a little bit of input, a little bit of reflection, and now we're starting to organize ourselves into commitments on getting the work done in the upcoming months.
Great. Thank you. So for that description of your work and for all the work that you're doing with that. As you can see on the slide, we are also doing restorative justice, sharing circles, restorative practices that we have been establishing so far within nine schools in our district with expansion next year. These are really techniques that our hope is to really train staff to build and maintain relationships with peers in this new way of developing communication with others. We've completed an audit of all of our schools of the social-emotional learning programs that are provided by social workers in the district. In addition to school climate teams, teachers and principals are expanding social-emotional learning within their classrooms to address social and behavioral concerns. As Peter was talking a little bit earlier about the Alternatives to Suspension and the change in data, Alternatives to Suspension is a counseling program that we have been providing in the district since 2008. But it is now offered to all students who have had a suspendable event. This change in policy and practice was requested by our school board in order to decrease the amount of days that students were absent from school. Principals and teachers have changed some of their disciplinary practices as a result to decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions. And the last thing is that our special education supervisors and psychologists have carefully reviewed the criteria for all special education eligibility categories, particularly the ED or Emotional Disability category and the Developmental Delay categories that Peter referenced earlier, so that we can ensure and improve the accuracy of our eligibility decisions with all children.
So I'm going to, we're going to transition into the organizational and other supports, the culture. And I want to, my colleagues, if we could be cognizant of time, because I want to make sure that we're sensitive to the community members who are here, so we can move into the community conversation. So I'm going to turn to Jamila first to talk about summer, then I'm going to talk to Izzy to talk about community schools, and then Beatrice Davis will talk about our hiring processes, and then I'll talk about some of the equity work. But we'll do it in the version of speed dating.
So greetings again. Many of you already know the wonderful and extensive partnerships we have this summer to support so many of our students. We, of course, will be partnering with YOU again, who supports the students who are enrolled in the YOU program during the year. We are expanding our Y Reader program that has traditionally served students in kindergarten first and second grade at three of our Title I schools, and now will also be adding the Walker School site. We reached out and had a relationship with Fleetwood last year. We'll continue this, and we're very excited to be starting a new relationship with Family Focus. We'll be providing three certified staff members there to have a STEM program and creative drama experiences for our students there. Many more opportunities, but those are the highlights.
All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about community schools. And community schools offers a powerful framework for addressing inequities, providing opportunities and helping students navigate barriers so they can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, and become active participants within our community. As we continue to expand with our initiative in District 65, the model provides an emphasis on organizing community resources in a school, setting to provide opportunities and services focused on academics, health, and social services, and parent leadership. It also ensures that everybody in the school, including youth, teachers, principals, families, and community partners, have a voice and that they work together and share accountability for student success. Believing in and setting high expectations for every child and building on community strength and embracing diversity. Therefore, the purpose of community schools is to make the school a hub for resources that connect students and families to wrap around supports and services so that they can be available for learning. The key to the model is that it is community-driven, community-driven. We have to do this together. So while the leveraged resources are brought into the school, the model and resources within the community, we have to note that at SHU, for example, it's our pilot school, we've had dental and vision clinics that have been offered to many of the students that attend the school. And SHU has partnership agreements and levered resources in the community. that attend the school, and SHU has partnership agreements and levered resources in the community. Other programs, such as the Healthy Kids Market, not only benefit students attending SHU, but wrap around serving the whole family. For example, siblings from feeder schools. Recently, there's also been discussions moving forward about how to readily engage our mental health agencies within the school community. We believe that community schools plays a critical role in providing more equitable opportunities for District 65 students and families, with the hope that the successful launch of a second site, we can continue to expand district-wide.
So earlier in the presentation, Peter mentioned that our current teacher demographics do not reflect our student demographics. He also pointed out that we are above the state average, which gives us a really good foundation to build upon as we strive to increase the diversity of our teaching population. Last year, if we look at the percentage of new hires that identified themselves as other than white, we had 20% self-identify in that way, so we plan on using this 20% as a baseline, and we've set a goal to increase the number of racially and ethnically diverse applicants, as well as new hires, to 30% by the 2017, 2018 school year. We feel this is a reasonable goal, recognizing the challenges that we have facing us, but certainly we want to have a staff that reflects our student population. So we are also working with an expert from Cross and JFDS to develop an in-house diversity recruitment plan that includes both long-term and short-term strategies that will assist us in our recruitment efforts. The strategies, just a few examples, include such things as a very targeted marketing campaign, an internal and external referral program, selective job registrations, developing a diverse team from our current staff to actually assist with our outreach and recruitment efforts, and capitalizing on the relationships that we have with local universities, and the opportunities for student-teacher placements, and increasing the student-teachers of color in our schools, and then recognizing that that is a pool to draw from right here in District 65. So overall, just to share that we are, you know, committed to our efforts in diversifying our staff, we will continue to look at these strategies, review them, and revise them as appropriate in order to achieve our goals moving forward.
And as Tracy started her comments and talked about the way the administration and the board will be moving forward, and a much more explicit way on our equity statements, and we had a very rich conversation at our policy meeting last week. Where we're going, I've engaged Corey Wallace, who I believe is here in the audience, and Corey is going to be working with the administrative team and me. We're gonna be convening an equity leadership team in the district. We'll move forward, one of the requests from last week was to have an equity statement and equity policy, and the way we've considered it now is to come back with a draft equity statement at the May board meeting. That would be somewhat, I would hope, parallel to the equity statement that is at ETHS, since we're serving the students of Evanston and Skokie, and so we'll look at what our good colleagues at the high school have done, and then we'll craft an equity statement. We'll then be working with the equity leadership team to look at how we move forward in the district intentionally around our policies, around our policies and our practices as it relates to equity, and we'll be focused on building an equity policy. I wanna take some time, two months, three months, to be able to do that, so that not only do we reflect the intentionality of having a policy that makes sense in the district, but so that we can do what we've done this evening, which is to have our very good teachers and principals who are working in the schools, who will be executing work under this policy, really have the buy-in on this. So that's the timeline on developing an equity policy, but we will be moving forward with intentionality, and we will couple all of that with training district-wide, starting at the senior level, but also going into the schools as the year goes on. So if I may, why don't we move to the next slide, which sort of gives, I believe, gives the summary.
Yeah, and so what we'll do is, as we transition into the next section, I was planning to close it out, summarizing with a reflection on the goals that all the activities that our administrators and school leaders just talked about are aimed at. In the interest of time, I'm not gonna summarize, I'll let you read and reflect that, you've got them there. We have set specific different goals to see improvement resulting from the actions we've outlined tonight, and we're committed to transparency on reporting our progress of our implementation, and in August, we will have an opportunity to visit the student achievement data from this current year, which will give us another chance to see the objective outcomes associated with this. So now with great thanks for bearing with us through what I know was a lot of information and a long presentation, I'd love to transition to welcome our guest panel to begin the community feedback part of the meeting, after which we will have open public comment.
I'd like to ask a favor of my colleagues, District 65 staff, teachers, principals, if you could vacate your seats so that we can have parents who are in the other room come into the room so they can listen to some of the commentary. So if you're a staff member of 65, I would love for you to either stand in the back or go to the overflow room, so our parents can come in and take your seats.
I'm turning over to Cicely right now, and I'd also like to encourage anyone else who would like to sign up to speak after the community forum, we still have a sign-up sheet in the audience.
Good evening. All right, I'm gonna try to talk to both sides here. So my name is Cicely Fleming, and I am a District 65 parent and a District 65 alum, and I have the privilege of also being one of the founder members of OPAL, which is the Organization for Positive Action and Leadership, and we are a merry band of travelers here around Evanston trying to push some system change. We invite you to join us. So I'm here in response to a letter that Terry Shepherd read, I think it was December 14th last year, of which OPAL and the NAACP and the Chestman, and Pastor Neighbors, and Pastor Cherry, and Keith Terry, who's a former school board member, Ottoman Braithwaite, Bethel AME Church, and the African Center Curriculum Parent Group submitted to the board, in response to some frustrations we had with the, I will say, the undereducation of black students in Evanston. And some of you all might have been at that meeting, we had probably about the same amount of parents there, we heard a lot of heartache, and so we were here tonight to kind of follow up on that, to get the data we requested, and unfortunately, as I sit here with you today, I still have a lot of heartache as I look at the data and think about our children who are being just so undervalued in this system, and it's really quite unfortunate to me as a parent. I have the ability to be with my kids full-time as a mom, and so I am there to advocate for them and to make sure that they are not being treated unjustly, however, by no means do I think that that needs to be the expectation of every parent in this district. So I'm here just to lend my voice to this cause. So when I came tonight, I was thinking, you know, I was gonna kind of make a plea to the board just about what I think is the injustice in our education system, but then I literally had a dream when I decided I was not going to make a plea. I dreamt of, this might sound very funny, but I'm a big dreamer, I dreamt of black people who pleaded before me, and I thought about people who pleaded, my ancestors who pleaded as they had shackles on their neck getting into the bottom of slave ships, and I thought about people who pleaded, mothers who pleaded when they were on the auction blocks and watched their kids being sold away from them, and I thought about black men who pleaded for angry mobs not to lynch them from trees, and I thought about the people who pleaded, including my mother's generation and her mother here in the district, for the school board at that time not to close Foster School, and I thought about all of the people who pleaded back in December, and all the heartache I heard, and so I thought, you know what, I am not going to plead for what should be a quality education for the students in this district, I just refuse. And so what I am here tonight to do is to speak to my community members, and I'm here to ask you as a community to use your voice to speak out about racism in our institutions. We see in our country that, I mean, we are imploding because of racism, but I walk around this town that's only 7.8 miles long, and we act as if there is no racism. Somehow, we act as if we have managed to miss that part of American history, and it really has created this environment where if you speak out about race, then you're just hypersensitive, you know? If you speak out about race, then, you know, you're paranoid and all these other things, but I think we have to just say what it is. And whether it's intentional or not, it's here, and if we don't address it, we continue to have these same issues in our schools, and our police, and all over. And so I'm here to speak to my community and ask you all, just use your voice and call it what it is. We don't need to be ashamed of it, we can't hide, it's not leaving, just call it what it is, and let's really just deal with it. And the only plea that I will make tonight is for the black parents in this room. I am gonna plead for you to take your frustration, and your disappointment, and your anger, and to turn that into determination, because it is the only way that we've ever survived in this country anyway, and I'm gonna plead with you to take your determination back to your communities, and to revive what used to be a lively, black community here in Evanston. I'm gonna plead with you to support each other in raising your children, I'm gonna plead with you to support each other in building community, and speaking out for one another. And then my last desperate plea that I'm gonna have is for us not to wait for systems to tell our children that they're brilliant. We know our children are brilliant. For us to take that responsibility, for us to do what we have to do to make sure that our children are valued, to make sure that they are pushed and they are fruitful in the society and our schools, that we have to take seriously and urgently what we saw in this data report, which is our children are not doing well, and we can't just, you know, either give up, or we can't just come here every Monday night and plead. We have to think seriously about how to educate our own children. You know, Marva Collins is my hero, is named after Cicely Tyson, and I think about Marva Collins who took the worst children, according to the schools, and $5,000, and she made brilliant scholars. And so I plead with you to really think about that. We don't have much time, we can't keep throwing kids away, we have kids dying in the streets. We have to really think seriously about educating our own children. So that is my only plea I will make tonight, and I will turn it over to Roger, my fearless warrior in this fight.
Thank you. As Cicely mentioned, I'm the board member with OPAL, and this is really a tome here, 43 pages, but Peter, I got up Saturday morning, went to Starbucks and ordered a grande americano. I actually read this thing. So one of the things that I came out of this, though, is I found out that District 65 educates white children much, much, much better than you do black children, much better. Just looking at something, just one thing came to my attention as an example of that. You got on page 14, we talk about kindergarten-ready children, kids who were not kindergarten-ready, black and white students from K through 3. Okay, and it shows that from kindergarten through the third grade, the children, black children who were not kindergarten-ready, their scores went down, okay, they went down. Contrast that with the white kids who were not kindergarten-ready, theirs went up. Okay, so you got, both groups are not kindergarten-ready, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, okay. So I would ask the question, now, why does that happen? Okay, we got two groups, both of them aren't kindergarten-ready. They go into school, okay, one group comes out with, their scores go down, the other one goes up by 8%, 8 percentage points. So, you know, I think there's something else here. Now, one thing this report really did prove is not about income, so some of those people who are always, oh, well, you know, it's income, this proved that. So I think, and I just wanna mention something else to you, just moving on here, about the recommendations and the interventions, and Dr. Goran, I mentioned this to you on Monday, all of the recommendations, they seem to lack one thing, they're always outward, they're never inward, okay? And so what I'm really talking about, the impact of race and racism in this district, on the children. Okay, now, this is the effect of race and racism, okay, you get things such as low expectation for black students. Now, by the way, this isn't mine, this is Dr. Pedro Nogueras, from his book talks about some of the effects of race and racism. So you have, for example, low expectations for black students. The effect of negative stereotypes. And finally, decisions and processes that may not themselves have any explicit racial content, but have the consequences of reducing or reinforcing racial disadvantage. Hence, after that, the necessity of an equity statement. And Dr. Goran, you mentioned that, what we're planning on doing, I'm gonna quickly go over what OPAL suggested as an example, as a sample of equity statement. And by the way, it's a racial equity statement, not a gender equity statement, not a disability equity statement, a racial equity statement. I just attended a conference today, the Midwest convening on racial equity, and municipalities across the country are looking at the issue of racial equity, and they have to identify race, because if you don't identify race, it'll get smoothed out, and then nothing will be done, as has the case been here, I think. Anyway, moving on, this is the OPAL's equity statement. First, I give you a little overview. Now, this is from your mission statement, "Working together as a community, we will inspire creativity and prepare each student to achieve academically, grow personally, and contribute positively to a global society." This is the mission of Evanston-Skokie School District 65. However, this mission has not been successful over the years when analyzed by race. However, this mission has not been successful over the years when analyzed by race. Every year, District 65 has produced outcomes that widen the disparity in academic achievement between white students and the students of color. Despite the numerous meetings, conversations and programs focused on the issue, District 65 has not taken truly explored the many factors that perpetuate racial inequities in our schools. It is time to acknowledge the role that both paths and present policies play in increasing racial inequities, both in schools and the long-lasting effects they have on students. To achieve your mission and put your model every student, every day, whatever it takes into practice, Opal believes that you must honestly and intentionally identify any institutional barriers that limit students, in particular students of color. Though overt discrimination and race-based laws are no longer in effect in Evanston schools, there must be an acknowledgement that the repercussions of such laws are still present. In the light of such success, in the light of successful implementation of a racial equity policy at ETHS and the success of academic restructuring, District 65 should be motivated to implement policies to ensure that no student's academic success can be predicted by their race. It is Opal's belief that every student in District 65 has the ability to learn and excel. It is our hope in union with the hope of many in the community that District 65 will work to eliminate all practices that contribute to racially disparate outcomes. Opal believes that it is in the best interest of all its students that District 65 should adopt a formal racial equity statement that is conjoined to their mission statement and strategic plan. Adopting a racial equity statement can only enhance the work being done in school climate teams, the community engagement efforts and the culturally relevant teaching training. Opal urges District 65 to be truthful about practices, biases and environments that hinder predominantly black and Latino students. Adopting this statement can only be the starting point, but it is vital to ensuring that any initiatives, programs, policies and resources come from the correct framework permitting for the most lasting, long-lasting impactful change to be made. That's just the overview. Now, we gave a sample statement here, these are some of the things that we included in our recommended statement. Point one, provide all students with respectful and positive learning environments in which their racial and ethnic diversity is valued and contributes to successful academic outcomes for all students. Second, employ, and I should caveat this one, this is the one I think we really need to, no, it's the third one, I'll go to this and second. Employ training programs that enable all District 65 staff members to actively and continually examine and eliminate institutional beliefs, policies, practices and teaching that perpetuate racial disparities in achievement. And here's the one that I think we really need to zero in on. Okay. Assure that the administration and the school board is consistently working to eliminate institutional beliefs, policies, practices and curriculums that perpetuate the racial disparities academically and culturally. Provide all, and the fourth one is provide all students with resources, opportunities, supports and interventions to ensure that they maximize their learning and achieve their full potential. Finally, prepare all students to succeed in a multicultural society by teaching the contributions and viewpoints of all people under the leadership of a staff that reflects the student population. So I think, Dr. Goran, you mentioned that there is a target date, was it May that you say for a draft? What's the final, that's for a draft? What is the, what would you estimate be the final date?
I think if we did May as a draft, I think we can have a statement by June for sure in our next board meeting, so that we can have some time for consideration and feedback.
Okay, great. The only other question I have then, and this is for the board, of all the things that you've, we've been talking about, the numbers and they are very, very depressing. What are you going to do differently to mitigate the black-white achievement gap? I'm not asking what are you going to do? Okay, you've done things before, but apparently they hadn't worked. What are you going to do differently to mitigate the black-white achievement gap? And that's just something I want you to ponder. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Featherson. Born and raised in Evanston, work in the District 202. Also run a youth program in the community for running sport, a lot of different kinds of sports. So I deal with a lot of youth in the community and I deal with a lot of parents. What I'm going to talk about today is some of the things I think need to change when it comes to educating black students. I could go on and on, but I'm not going to, you know, drag this out. The first thing I'm going to talk about, and I'm going to use a lot of experiences that I've seen personally, and I'm going to use some statements that I've heard from other African-American people in the community. The first thing I'm going to talk about is some of the stereotypes. First one I want to talk about, the reason I want to bring this one up first is because my wife and a group of parents met with you, I think this weekend, about situation with the principal at the school, who I think is doing a wonderful job and I love her and I hope she stays. And the reason why I bring this up, because it was a black guy who she said, said that he was afraid to come up to some students because their pants were sagged, which is definitely a stereotype and a really real silly one, I might add. One time I was here, my son went to this building here for preschool for a couple of years. I overheard two teachers talking about that they were afraid of a student. So I asked the teacher, how old was the student? They said, four years old. So they were afraid of a four-year-old student, they said. So I said, what color was the student? Well, they said, well, why does that matter? I said, well, it matters. Thank you, thank you, I get to it, Lonnie, don't even worry. I said, it matters because I just want to know. Well, they said he was black. So I said, do you have any white students that you're afraid of at four years old? They both got quiet, ended the conversation and walked away. So those are some of the stereotypes when we talk about why there's an educational gap starting at kindergarten. That is some of the reasons why, is because teachers are either afraid of black students for whatever reason. Why, I don't understand that, but I know it's true. And they're not communicating with these kids, they're not reaching these kids, and that's the reason why they start to fall behind so early and that's why the gap is so big, is because they don't have the connection with us. Now, you could say that they don't want to have a connection with us, which I don't want to believe. Or you could say, because I'm not bashing teachers, I think teachers do a great job and I think it's a great profession and I praise all teachers no matter what. Or is it that they don't understand? And I think it's more of the latter, that we don't understand each other. But that comes into, how do we try to bridge that gap? How do we try to come together? And I'm going to try to do all this without sounding too angry. Even though I am very angry with some of the numbers that I've seen, and because I work in the school, I see this stuff true and I do see African-American students get treated unfairly all the time, every single day. The next thing I'm going to talk about is some of the cultural images. See, white supremacy is so deep in America that a lot of people don't believe that it even exists. We don't believe that it exists because it's almost something that's been taught to us, not taught in schools, but because of the images that we see on TV, we praise a lot of people who are known racists, known slave owners, bigots, you know, people who done some of the most atrocious devastating things to humans possible and we praise them. So some of the things that we need to change in the schools, because that is the main thing that we need to talk about, is we need to start teaching black kids things before slavery. Because the first thing that we teach them about is slavery, then we go into the Jim Crow laws, and we also go into segregation. Black people, African people, history did not start with slavery. So we need more images of kings, queens in Africa and positive people in our classrooms, you know? Just as you want to teach, you know, about Thomas Jefferson, who was a known racist who owned slaves and you praise him, we want to praise some black people in our kids so they see that kind of stuff, you know? I remember I took my son out for hockey a few years ago and he said he didn't want to play hockey anymore because there's no black kids playing. His coach, I told his coach that, I told him probably won't bring my son back because of that. So he brought me a couple of pitches of some black hockey players. So, and my son's only eight years old and it's real funny because we kept playing. I said, so do you still want to play hockey, you know, even now that you see some black players? He said, no. I said, why not? He said, because it's only two. So all the hockey players that they had, he could only bring me two pitches of African-American players playing hockey. So he doesn't identify with it and he didn't feel comfortable playing anymore. And unfortunately, my son didn't want to play hockey anymore. Another thing that I think we need to improve on is some of the negative images that get portrayed in the media. One time I was talking to a student, and, well, I wasn't talking to a student, the student was talking to his teacher. And he said in a statement, well, what's the use of me going to school? And this is a true statement. I'm just going to get shot or put in jail anyway. So a lot of African-American students, even as they get older, believe the stuff that they see in the media of police shooting them, police arresting them, and that it's so unfair that they don't even have a chance to make it, making it. And that's very bothersome to me because I grew up in Evanston School District and I never had that feeling of hopelessness. So obviously something is getting worse while the children are believing that there's no hope in the kids, in any hope, you know, in their future. Another thing I'm going to talk about is the suspensions. Now, obviously, the number that we showed up here is just out, it's just crazy of how many black kids get suspended compared to white kids. And there's no way you can tell me that it's because black kids are doing more wrong than white kids. I just don't believe that. And I don't think anybody in this room believes that either. But it's obviously happening. And one thing I do, what makes me mad with that number is that we have control of that. I was picking my son up from school one time, another time I was picking up my daughter, and both times I saw African-American students outside of the classroom. Now, both, one time it was one of my football players, so obviously I went up to him and I asked him, why was he outside? He said, the teacher put him outside because he was talking. Now, if you're a teacher and you really have a problem with a student, he should be sent to the principal, not put outside the classroom where he's not doing anything productive and he's sitting there and he's obviously made to feel like an outcast by standing outside the classroom. And also, I hear teachers, you know, sometimes will say, you know, well, will laugh at a student when they're talking, but obviously there's different rules for African-American students, I guess, for talking or being disruptive. And what are the levels of being disruptive? Well, I say all this because I think that we all have to change our way of thinking and we have to change our way of teaching. Because I do revolve around sports a lot, because if a basketball coach was failing 50% of the time, you would fire. You know, if a doctor was losing 50% of his patients, you would get rid of them. You know, and I'm not saying get rid of teachers at that because we need more teachers, but we have to change the way that they're teaching. Obviously, they've figured out a way for the white kids to learn. Even when I see the numbers of the white kids who are below average in reading, by the time they're in junior high, by the time they end junior high, they're caught up. And they're even, they're at grade level. So I'm wondering, what are they doing? What miracle teaching are they doing for the white students to become grade level and the black kids are not? 40% in some schools. And I just think it's ridiculous in a community like that, because if it was white students, it would be such a problem in here that you wouldn't be able to even have it being right here, it would be so many people in here demanding that this is a change. So right now, that's what we're demanding, that you change the way you're educating these kids. And if we don't, then we need to figure out ways to get us money so we can educate them ourselves and make sure that they're learning to read. The most important thing is the reading. And we need to make our kids learn to read, because you're not teaching reading in schools. And I know some other people are going to touch on that, so I won't go into that. And just to make sure I touched on all my points. And I did most of them. And I'll let the next person talk, thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I don't like having my back to the community and I think you should be at the forefront at all times. You know, I kind of had an issue, I'm going to take issue with, again, this was a lot of information to take in. I really think the district should rethink how they present information in a way to parents that's a little bit more accessible and a lot more easier to digest. And it's like you're trying to smoke us out. And I'm sure you're probably not, but again, just be very thoughtful about that next time. My name is Eric Hernandez. I am a parent of three boys, all of them go to DOS. I am a newer resident to Evanston. My wife actually grew up in Evanston just a bit. I mean, she moved in from Jersey and went her last two years to ETHS. So again, she told me a lot of stories about inequity and how she had friends who, again, she'd see in her math classes, she didn't score very well in math, but she didn't see any of her Latino or black friends when she was in her advanced English classes, right? Math placement. So there's this history, right, that this district has had in regards to racial inequity for both black and brown students. But what I really came to focus on, I'm also, to also inform you, I'm also the chairman of the Latino Engagement and Action Council. So we just formed this council, which emerged out of a summit that we had, where we had our Latino community members as well as folks who, again, work in different institutions around Evanston, engage and talk about the issues that impact our community, which is, you know, immigration, racism and education. And out of that summit, we created this Latino Engagement and Action Council. So for any of my Latinos who are here, I invite you to come and join us. We'll be having a meeting in June where we're going to continue exploring these issues and how to articulate ourselves and be civically engaged. So, you know, we're not just going to talk to you and try to just educate you, we're going to learn from you. Because again, at the core, if we want lasting, sustainable change, it has to come from the community. We have to be the ones who have to take the charge and take the lead when it comes to the education of our children. And we have to be put in front. And we can't be, we can't continue to be dictated to and told what to do. Because I think we as parents and community members know what's best for our children. But I want to talk about JH. And, you know, something that qualifies me, again, I've taught for 10 years, I've taught just about every grade. I'm coming off a fellowship that focused, it's called Illinois Early Childhood Fellowship, where I focused on studying policy, systems and advocacy around early childhood in Illinois. I work with an organization hosted by me called Voices for Illinois Children, who does a lot of public advocacy work. And again, I explore the themes of family and community engagement, bilingual education and, you know, I just followed, and childhood trauma. And, but what I want to talk about is again, so I want to do a little exercise, I want everybody to close their eyes. Everybody close their eyes. And I want you, I want you imagining walking out in this warm evening. And you're out maybe by yourself or with a partner. And you see three little boys, maybe middle schoolers, it's like about 6 o'clock in the evening. And they're laughing and giggling and they're pushing each other around. And I want to imagine what color, I want you to think about what color those kids are that you thought of, right? So, and if they're black, how do you feel if you see them approaching you and you're approaching them? And if they're white, how do you feel? And if they're Latino, how do you feel? They're boys just pushing each other around, calling each other names. They're boys just pushing each other around, calling each other names. Okay, you can open your eyes. When we can sit down here and talk about how we felt when we pictured those three types of children, we can be very honest about what we felt. I think that's when we're going to start moving this conversation forward. I'll be honest, you know, I still have issues to deal with myself. I mean, again, I come from a Mexican community, and again, Mexicans are racist. You know, I think everybody has bias, right? And having taught, I taught in the North Lawndale neighborhood, where I worked with a lot of black and Latino kids, I had those lower expectations. Oh, you know, these kids are having it hard, or their foster parent isn't there to help them out. I mean, I had all these lowered expectations for black kids, and even my own Latino kids that I serviced. But in time, I found that if you build a trust, if you're persistent, if you believe that all children are special, that they all have the opportunity and the ability to reach the goals that you set for them, then you move forward. And I ended up developing relationships with Latino and black parents, you know, and at first, you know, they looked at me like, "Oh, you know, what's this Mexican guy doing, you know, trying to help out our kids?" But, you know, when I was honest, I said, "Look, you know, I'm trying to learn about what it takes to educate your children. I'm your partner. I'm here to help you. I can't do it alone." When we can say that, then we can all work together and move this needle forward for all our kids. So what I want to talk about is, there was this recent study by John Hopkins University, right, where it talks about how teachers view black children, right, and other children of color. So I want to point out some, a couple of data points here. So it looked at, so white and other non-black teachers were 12 percentage points more likely than black teachers to predict black students wouldn't finish high school, right? So, you know, again, the study was asking white teachers, just teachers of different colors, Latinos, blacks, whoever, you know, so they were more likely to predict that their black students wouldn't finish high school. Non-black teachers were 5% more likely to predict their black male students wouldn't graduate high school than their black female students. Black female teachers are more significantly optimistic about the ability of black boys to complete high school than teachers of any other demographic group. White male teachers are 10 to 20% more likely to have low expectations for black female students. For black students, particularly black boys, having a non-black teacher in a 10th grade subject made them much less likely to pursue that subject. Starting at 13 months of age, black children are more likely to be labeled as bad. At 13 months of age, we already make this judgment call on children. We already, so speaking to what we were just talking about, how, you know, they're afraid, you know, these teachers were afraid of this four-year-old black child. Again, it starts at 13 months, they are labeled as bad. What does it look like in early childhood? I mean, these kids spend less time in free choice and more time in teacher-directed activities. And we know that the best practice in early childhood is that children need to be, you know, the work of children is play. You know, children learn by playing, by interacting, by socializing with other kids. So when we don't give them that opportunity, when it's teacher-directed, and they're being dictated to and told what to do, and say, "Sit down, you're too wiggly," or, "Look, he's got the wiggles," you know, "We're going to have him sit down, go sit in the corner." He's missing out on, we're sending a very clear message to him. We're sending them back at the beginning of their educational journey. You know, again, toxic stress and childhood trauma experienced by children in poverty can negatively affect children's attention, memory, and executive function. So I'm glad that the district is going to look at that. But again, we should really think about looking at trauma-informed practice and adopting that as a way to, you know, embed it within all our practices. You know, usually, so black boys are perceived as older and less innocent, right? And the characteristics of childhood are less frequently applied when thinking of black boys relative to white boys. So that's why I kind of had you go through that exercise with me, because again, it's a question of perception and of internal bias that we all have. And, you know, it's promising to hear that, again, we really are going to look at how, you know, that the district's going to try to, really try to value what, I hope, what the community brings into, or what our families bring into the educational setting, right? But I fail to hear, you know, where parents are involved. I think, again, we have to, you know, I hear like these, you know, "Okay, well, you know, we need to do more parent engagement, and we're exploring that. Well, you know, I think we should improve parent engagement, and we're going to explore that." But how? You know, what are the specifics, right? Again, we, you know, we have to recognize the funds of knowledge that students and families bring into the educational setting. We have to develop those relationships, have high expectations for all kids, you know, balance academic content with social-emotional development from pre-K to third, ensure that the environment reflects, you know, black students, and that they see themselves reflected in the books that they read, in the pictures that are on the wall in the classroom. Again, that's what we need, right? And that the environment and education has to be a mirror of our culture. So moving forward in a real effort to improve student success and close the opportunity gap through a strength-based lens, the following is a list of starters. New methods in which a district can work towards total equity. Some of these measures are already part of District 65's strategic plan for 2015 to 2010, yet without promising concrete measures, all urgency is lost. We ask the district to take a closer examination of the following goals and establish a concrete framework to achieve these goals. So I advise, you know, Head Start has this really great, and for me, Head Start's the Cadillac of early childhood programs. They have these amazing practices. And again, you know, we have three different types of programs here at J E H. It's the, you know, it's Head Start, Pre-K for All, and SPAC. And again, Head Start has this really great strength-based cultural framework. It's titled, there's a guidance report that's called "Supporting the School Readiness of African-American Males," which I think provides a template, and which uses a dual generational lens, that looks at child and family outcomes to guide culturally and linguistically appropriate approaches to educating children of color in D-65 early childhood programs and K through third grades. Again, it's a great framework, so you get Joyce, and anybody who's in charge of J E H, please look at that as a way to guide how we engage parents and how we educate black children in the J E H Center. Of course, hire more black and Latino male educators. Enhance cultural and linguistic aspects of the creative curriculum, which is used in Pre-K for All programs. So again, you know, good curriculum at any level, you know, has this cultural and linguistic component, right? I think there's this, because of No Child Left Behind, because of accountability, we have this overemphasis on reading and math, and we need to definitely, definitely work on reading. But at the same time, you know, contextualize that reading so it's meaningful to black children and to Latino children, right? You know, I read somewhere where it's like, there was this, I don't know if you've seen the news, where there was a little, this little black girl who's been, who tried, who's collected all these, all the books that feature, you know, black children or black characters, right? Let's get that list. I mean, she was on Ellen, I think, a couple of months ago? I mean, again, I mean, that's what we need. I mean, that's what we need to see in all our classrooms, right? Take an inventory of the observational tests that are administered in early childhood settings and determine whether these tests lend themselves to inherent racial and cultural bias. And I got to tell you, so standardized testing, again, it gives us just a picture in time of how a child's doing at that day, right? The kid could be sick. A teacher, as a teacher, you know, as a former teacher, I know that there might be subjects that I didn't teach, that I know the kids are not going to do well, so that's going to lower the score. Again, it's not just the only tool. But let's look at how perhaps these achievement gaps are a result of, you know, tests that are culturally, inherently culturally and racially biased. I want, you know, we should commit to more formal and informal comprehensive assessments that more accurately measure the social, emotional, and academic development of children from pre-K to eighth. Again, hold our leadership accountable for not maximizing funding and resources for home visiting, Head Start, Pre-K for All, and Special Education funding to provide the highest quality services to students and their families. Ensure that J E H becomes a welcoming community hub where children and their families can get access to the array of community services, job training, ESL, GED, childcare, to support the best outcomes for all community members. So, you know, I love the concept of the community school, but schools by nature should be community schools already. And again, we heard some examples here where there are some schools that are actually like community schools, and maybe with a little bit of tweaking, you know, are going to, you know, meet the criteria of ensuring that all community members are there, you know, from seven o'clock in the morning to like seven at night. And a place where, you know, families can gather and feel safe, and feel like it's safe to attend into better, not only their child's outcomes, but themselves. You know, facilitate, I'd like to see facilitation of a pre-K to kindergarten transition reflective practice group. So peers can learn about each other's practices and expectations, and better families' transitions from pre-K to eighth. So again, having colleagues from pre-K from J E H Center meeting with, you know, kindergarten teachers in all our district schools to talk about, you know, what their expectations are in kindergarten up to third grade, and then so our early grades can learn about what's happening here in J E H. We'd like to hire certified music and STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math teachers to support thematic project-based learning centers, which are integrated around early literacy, and ensure that this happens from pre-K to third. So let's get this pre-K to third grade continuum going. You know, review our FY17 and 18 budget to ensure our early childhood teachers have the resources, supplies, and professional development they need to provide high-quality, culturally and linguistically appropriate early childhood services to our children and families. And ensure all J E H teachers educate ESL bilingual students have ESL and bilingual endorsements. So again, so we want to have the highest qualified teachers in front of all our children. That's it for me.
Good evening, board. The city of Evanston, parents, teachers. My name is Ronnie Robinson. I have a third grader at Oakton Elementary. I have been in the city of Evanston now, since I graduated, 27 years. I came here in 1989. And for 27 years, we have been discussing this same issue. For 27 years. Talking about justice and fairness, talking about why can't we get equity? Why can't we get equality? Why can't we ask it for no more than anyone else? Just a fair shake, right? Why can't we? Well, I'm a historian. My professor told me a long time ago, he said, "Ronnie, if you have a problem today, all you need to do is look back in history and see how they dealt with it. That way you'll know how you need to deal with it." And so what I'm going to talk about is, are the numbers that you guys presented, but I have to provide a proper context. I have to provide the educational system in the context of black people. So if you would, go back with me. Some folks say black folks got here in 1619. My history shows 1503, but we'll go with 1619 because that's the common date that a lot of people know. So from 1619 to 1865 is 246 years. Illegal for black people in the 13 colonies to learn how to read and write. We were illiterate. Is that a fact? Can we all agree on that? Okay. So, education for liberation, literacy for freedom. That was the motto of the group of my paternal forebears. There are no accidents in the system of education, only precedents. That is to say that only things preceding what we can say, we have witnessed with our own eyes today. In other words, how did we get here? How did we arrive here today? The system of education must be viewed through the lens of history for context. That said, 99% of all blacks people in America are direct descendants of slaves. No other group can say that. This makes us exceptional. And when I say exceptional, I don't want to be lumped in with anybody else when you refer to me. Not a person of color, not an African-American, a black person. That's what I was then, and that's what I am now. Through the policies of benign neglect in the Nixon administration, we have gotten all confused through political correctness. And now we have all sorts of fabricated out-groups that have come in over black people that did not endure 246 years of chattel slavery. Or 100 years of Jim Crow. So I don't like those terms, and I find it offensive when you call me a person of color. So please don't do it. It was illegal for black people to learn to read and write for 246 years, from 1619 to 1865. In America, the 13 colonies, this was the law. And the penalties for breaking these laws vary from state to state. If you were caught teaching a black person to read, at minimum, you received a $100 fine and 39 lashes with a whip. If you were black, in many cases, meaning a black freedman, you were executed. This is how serious this thing that we call education is, and literacy. It's not a joke. We're acting as if it's a joke. And for 27 years, as long as I've been in Evanston, we have not taken the problem seriously. If we had, we wouldn't be having this conversation here tonight. Again, if you were a so-called freed black, the penalty for teaching a black person to read, in many cases, was execution. Again, this makes black people exceptional. There was no other group in the country at that time that was executed for teaching somebody how to read and write. There was no other group that was systematically excluded from every single policy in this country directed to education except black people. That's a fact. And it seems to me that it's still going on today, just undercover. After the Civil War, that's 1865, 96% of all blacks were illiterate in the country. The other 4%, or 200-plus thousand that were so-called freed, were undereducated. We'll just say that. Illiterate. Can't read, can't write. 30 years later, in 1896, after the 13th Amendment, after the 14th Amendment, after the 15th Amendment, blacks reduced that down to 44%. Never been done in the history of the country. We did it. Again, that makes us exceptional people, because we did it during the era and the terror campaign of Jim Crow. Where four and a half to five million blacks left the South fleeing terror, running from the people down there, coming up north. Y'all call it the Great Migration. So, 44%. How did we do it? What did we do? We didn't have classrooms, we didn't have schools. We learned under trees, in barns, dirt. How did we do that? We were committed. Education for liberation, literacy- Education for liberation, literacy for freedom. That was the motto. There's another maligned out-group, their motto is never forget. I won't mention who they are, but they're certainly a social maligned out-group. And they have never forgot. And they hold vast power in this country today because of that motto. The age of Jim Crow, by the nineteen fifties, is segregated schools, north and south, segregated schools, separation, based on race. We live in a race-based society, everybody knows it. Everybody knows it, except we won't talk about it. Everything in this country is race-based. The monies you get from the federal government is race-based. This is why they ask you to identify black, this, that, and other people. Illiteracy is reduced down to eighteen percent, again, by Brown versus Board. For me, you don't know what that is. That's the act that, that said that segregation was illegal. That's right. So by nineteen fifty-four, blacks had reduced our illiteracy rate down to eighteen percent. As a group, how did we do that? Certainly, it wasn't because of seventy-seven percent of all of the teachers teaching us was white. Not to place blame, but clearly, if we live in a race-based society, we have to identify that as being a potential problem. Because of TV images, the way your mind is shaped, who's the out-group? Who's the in-group? Who should, who you should be like, who you should not be like? Who influences you and who shouldn't influence you? Sociology talks all about it. You guys know what I'm talking about. By nineteen sixty-four and sixty-five, various polls across the country asked white people, do you think that black kids and white kids receive a fair and, and equivalent education? Overwhelmingly, Gallup polls, overwhelmingly Gallup polls, over eighty to eighty-five percent during a time that it was obvious during the sixties that there was no equality. Eighty to eighty-five percent of white people said absolutely. Yes, they receive a fair and equitable education. Now what does that say? Because you are telling me today that we have a problem. I've been here before. Haven't we, Ms. Shepherd? And we've been talking about this same thing before. Equality in education. What does cultural awareness means? I've heard that noun for twenty-seven years. Cultural acknowledgement in the curriculum. The first university in the history of the world, in the history of the world, the first sign of European intelligence was a book of poetry written by Homer in eight fifty B.C. The first university in the world was in Africa, in Waset. The Greeks called it Thebes. The Arabs called it Luxor. Everybody came there to learn, including the Greeks. That's a statement of cultural inclusiveness. I cannot be taught that everything comes from Greece when that's a lie. Hippocrates was born, Hippocrates was born in three thirty-three. The father of medicine, you know what I'm talking about. Absolutely. My wife, you know, was an aspiring Med student and she used to talk about the Hippocratic Oath and I read it and they call him Excalopius in the, in the oath. Or his true name, and I could go into it, but I'm not, but it starts with Usama. Overwhelmingly, eighty to eighty-five percent said according to, over, overwhelming, eighty to eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent said yes. During a time that it was obvious that that's not true for black people based on policies put in place like benign and neglect. Benign neglect. Benign neglect said, take the focus off of black people and put it on all the other out-groups. You know, people of color, minorities, women. People have issues, absolutely. But we are in a crisis situation and I don't have time to play games. Which says, and I just told you that. H.R. Hardeman, chief, chief of staff for the Nixon administration said, and this is what I keep hearing, H.R. Hardeman went to jail for, in Watergate. He was the chief of staff along with Daniel Patrick Monahan. These were the sociologists guys that came up with that policy benign neglect. Hardeman said, the problem is really the blacks. We need to create policy that recognizes this while not appearing to do so. Many of us in this room right now secretly believe and say, the problem really is the blacks. They just don't want to learn. They're too stupid to learn. They're too lazy, shiftless. They don't want to teach their kids. They're saying it in Chicago right now. This maligned out-group called black people. Benign neglect is a policy that's in effect today. Black people are still under this policy. There's something wrong with a system of education that gives the appearance of funding equality. That uses standardized tests on unstandardized students. Black children. Unequal academic tracking, special ed enrollment. Unequal implementation of discipline, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I only have a few questions. Based on where we are today with our failed educational system here in Evanston, specifically speaking about black people because it has failed for us. Can we agree that what we are doing today is not working based on the numbers that you guys have presented this afternoon? Years ago, I was a drug counselor. And the first step when you're talking to anybody that's trying to recover from alcohol is with a drug addiction is, we admitted we were powerless over alcohol, that our lives had become unmanageable. We admitted. You have to acknowledge the problem. You can never, you can never get help if you do not acknowledge the problem. And we have a problem in Evanston. Next question. Explicit, explicit phonics and direct instructional training versus our current whole language literacy practice? Now, I am perfectly aware that we have introduced a new framework. How much of that new framework inculcates phonics specifically? See, it is a documented fact by several different academics across the country that black children learn differently than white children. And instead of us having a one-size-fits-all approach, we might ought to take that into We just might ought to think about it. Little boys have the early beginnings of testosterone and little girls do not have testosterone. So that might account for why they move around a lot. Plus the sugar that's out in the food. So in the new framework, what is the timeline and proposal for implementation after you answer my question in regards to how much of that new framework inculcates phonics specifically? Sixty percent, twenty percent? I need to know. Next question. Are we teaching phonics? And if not, what are we teaching? How is the, hmm? How is the funding going to break down as far as the allocation by schools with the new implementation of this new, this new framework? How are the monies going to be divvied up?
Mr. Robinson, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Do you mean funding for reading and overall?
Overall, I'm, I'm talking about with the new literacy framework that, that, that the superintendent is now introduced. Is it going to be based on the kids with the greatest need? And then down to the kids without, you know, with the least amount of need or how is it going to break down specifically? School by school? And if we don't see substantive change, different, that we have agreed here on tonight, meaning a reduction in the current numbers, will the superintendent and all of his staff be willing to take a ten to forty percent pay cut? For this failed system of education? You should not be rewarded if you cannot get the job done. I turn over any time to my esteemed colleague, Ms. Shepherd.
Good evening. My name's Terri Shepherd and as everybody has introduced themselves, I'm a past District sixty-five school board member. I am a--
Ms. Shepherd, can you move the mic?
Okay, okay, all right. All right, okay, here we go. Okay, as everyone else has introduced themselves, my name is Terri Shepherd, excuse me. I'm a past District sixty-five school board member of a mother of three students, very successful adults who matriculated through District sixty-five and two oh two, and I am the widow of Lloyd Shepherd, who for twenty some odd years tried to encourage the district to, to bring on culturally relevant teaching. And it's, it's, I feel like Columbus discovered America, you know, after hearing it for twenty years, somebody's finally deciding it's a good idea, good idea, now we're going to do that in the schools. And, and I am glad to hear that. This, I was encouraged when Fred mentioned that he's, he's really, his staff is really enthusiastically using Gloria Ladson's Billings, the dream teachers. Before I got on the board, I was talking about the dream teachers. It fell on deaf ears. Mrs. Pate bought Juandjikunjufu here when she was a principal. You know how long Miss Pate been gone, but nobody wants to hear anything when it's just one person. So this is what a collective effort is. You get six of us up here representing thirteen other organizations and now people are listening to what many of us have been saying for over twenty years. So, and that, and I also want to point out, and that I've been up here for over twenty years, you think they spell my name right, right? Okay, so, all right. So I want to put this in to continue in some historical context. Usually in past meetings, it was always Bennett that came up and talked about the history. And so I'm going to take over a little Bennett's position tonight.
I was telling--
Yeah, I'm taking Bennett's place and I'm going to start my presentation in nineteen eighty-six, when then Superintendent Eugene Mokehi disaggregated the test scores. And for the first time in District sixty-five history, Evanston, Evanstonians saw the gap. And it was very simple, similar to what you're seeing now. This is persistent problem here. In approximately nineteen ninety-five, and I'm using approximately because I'm not sure the date, and any, any dates I use, I, I can back them up with, with at least another person, maybe who's even in the room who was there at the time. In approximately nineteen ninety-six, Superintendent Darwin Johnson stated, "At best, District sixty-five has a lot of mediocre teachers." In nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, District sixty-five school board asked a retired, well-mad superintendent to serve as interim superintendent until such time as the superintendent could be hired. To paraphrase a direct quote, quote, "I wouldn't ruin my career by coming here. I couldn't get anything done. The teachers are too closely tied to the administration," end quote. In two thousand two or two thousand three, Fred Hess, a faculty member at Northwestern School of Education and Social Policy, was contracted to review the teaching methodologies in the district. He found that, and here I may be off by five, no more than five, I promise you. He found that there are ten or fifteen teachers he could identify in District sixty-five who were effectively teaching black students how to read. Now think about that. All the teachers we had, and only ten, maybe fifteen, had a track record of being able to teach black students how to read. That's a terrible history there. Okay, in two thousand, in twenty-ten, Dr. Witherspoon, the superintendent of two oh two, noted that, quote, "Due to the increase in student test scores, there were African-American and Latino students eligible for honors classes who were not being assigned to these more rigorous courses. The increase in test scores for District sixty-five black and Latino students is why the freshman restructuring program was implemented." Now I'm certain for many of you, the findings in this African-American student achievement report were disappointing. And for those of you that didn't see this full report, you should see this because this is going to set it out. What they, what they showed here, I really think showed some promise, but you need to see where they're starting from because this is atrocious. This is atrocious. It's, if you, if you, if you ever have to budget your money, you're going to ask yourself, where the heck is my money going? When you consider District sixty-five pays fourteen thousand dollars spends, fourteen thousand dollars a year on a student, and we got some gaps at fifty points, thirty points? That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. So everybody look at this. Every, if you don't have a student, think of yourself as a taxpayer because it's, it's your money, okay? All right, okay. So anyway, when I was reading this report, the only thing I was glad to see was the end of it because it was just so disappointing. You know, it was just so disappointing. It was just so disappointing. It was like, thank God, there's not another table. Right, right. Each page was more disparaging than the preceding page. And this isn't now. This is what you all need to understand. This is not now. This is historical. Something is wrong here, okay? All right. Okay, the facts of the report of the black student achievement in District 65 speak for themselves. Black students in District 65 are performing at levels below the national average. That's in here. I want to quote something here, it's referring to the PARC test. District 65, and they compared nine schools, nine surrounding schools that they picked here, they wanted to, and they're very honest. I'm gonna say that. I thought, you didn't have to do that, but you did. So, District 65 has the largest gap in academic outcomes between black and white students among comparison of nine districts. Among the same districts, District 65 has the largest gap between black and white students. Black student achievement in District 65 is slightly below average achievement nationwide, while white achievement is substantially higher than the national average. Now, they compared us with nine schools, surrounding area schools, but this is national numbers. Once again, think about the dollars you spend, the time you entrust your kids to District 65, and then consider the product. Then consider the product. Going back to Dr. Mokahy's acknowledgement of the gap and Dar Johnson's mediocre statement, Dr. Murphy's failed attempt at creating a system of accountability for District 65 teachers, and the Hess report, the one constant we have in District 65 is poor teaching techniques. Poor teaching. Nobody wants to criticize teachers. I have friends that are teachers. I have friends that are administrators, but it's the teachers. It's the teachers. And we entrust our kids to the teachers eight hours a day. Eight hours a day, and like you said, they get paid, they get paid. And like I said to Richard the other night, when we were out front, I've worked in corporate America for over twenty-five years. If I worked for a company that turned out these kind of results, a publicly traded company, everybody would be fired. The board would be restructured, everybody, they'd be starting over. But we can't do that, so we have to entrust the board, the administration, to do what they say they want to accomplish in this report. And once again, I'm gonna say, I'm happy that you presented the figures in the way you did, because one of our criticisms after reading is, there were no corrective strategies in here at all. All we saw was a terrible score after terrible score, just terrible. There was nothing encouraging in here. So, I'm really happy that you presented, so we can at least see the plan, and then we can come back and be critical of the plan if it doesn't work. But at least we're seeing that. Okay. Many of us on the committee, some of us, because all of us didn't talk, we tried to determine whether you were blaming, or well, I'm using the word blame, the test scores on poverty or issues of race. And I think, because for the most part, black folks are poor, you know, I was born poor. You know, my husband was born poor. Hell, my husband told me a story about, he used to shine suede shoes. You know, when any suede left, he'd shine suede shoes. We was poor, okay? So, we don't buy the poor part, but we will buy the racism gap. And one thing that I had to change my mind on before I started, and one of the librarians drew it to my attention, and Sergio, you did too, because I was about to make a statement that I continue to believe the problem is systemic racism. I was gonna say, I would be willing to consider otherwise if I couldn't point to a knowledge of the achievement gap for thirty years. Then I was gonna say, well, I know, but we're talking about District 65, okay? Or when, I'm talking about how long I've known. Okay, so thirty years, that's a long time. Okay, so, I was gonna say, I don't believe teachers have to be black to teach black students. Now, I have changed my mind, because Sergio just quoted from the John Topkin report, and the librarian just brought me the excerpt from the book that said the same thing you did, that if you want that black teachers, I don't know if it's their identification with the black student, but they just have, they can convince that kid that he's gonna be successful, whereas you just pointed out, nobody else can do that, so whether it's Marion or whatever. So, I'm gonna take back what I was gonna say, because somebody much smarter than me said I didn't know what I was talking about. Okay? So, and I'm gonna end mine on that. But now, I have a list of some bullet points that we would like to see, and some of them have already been mentioned, but I want, we want, the board members, the administrators, and teachers to participate in PEG seminars or workshops immediately. Because if you don't know you're racist, you can't correct your racist tendencies. And we want a greater effort to hire African-American teachers and administrators, and that's something that you can do right away. You know, that doesn't take a plan. You just hire qualified black teachers. And it was noted during our research here that there's only one African-American lead teacher in this preschool program. So, you need to start mirroring to these black children at an early age, their potential, okay? The way we're talking about over J E H, right over here, J E H. And we want a system to replace retiring African-American and teachers and principals with other qualified African-Americans. Over at J E H, we'd like a certified music and a STEM teacher to teach music and science at least once a week in early childhood program. We want the best teachers placed with the lowest performing students. That's been a best practice since long before the No Child Left Behind, and I don't think we're doing that effectively. And I'm probably maybe one of the few people, I see one that might be older than me, who knows what TESSA is? I used to talk about TESSA all the time when I was on the board. And TESSA is, well, it's the acronym for Teacher Expectation Student Achievement. It's a program that used to be in District 65, and it taught teachers how to understand the dynamics of the classroom, the children, taught them how to place student teaching styles, all that kind of stuff, and some races raised them how to identify that as well. And we couldn't, we didn't demand that teachers avail themselves of TESSA training. For TESSA, you had to have a certain number of teachers to participate, and because TESSA was a year-long, eighteen-month-long, something like that, teachers didn't want to do it. They didn't want to commit to it. So, no, we didn't have TESSA classes. And I would like to see, if we don't, there's probably something very similar to TESSA if TESSA is no longer available, but I'd like to see any teacher hired within District 65 have to take a TESSA-like course prior to being tenured. And if they can't take this course, it's gonna make them a better teacher for educating all our kids. They gotta go somewhere else. We can't tolerate mediocre teachers anymore. We want teachers to be given professional development opportunities to focus on reading or the cross-cultural materials that we've talked about tonight, and teachers be given time to meet with counselors and other teachers outside of lunchtime meetings to ensure they have time to talk about specific students that need more help. And I have a question that I'd like to end with, because I don't think it was addressed, and we've talked about this for years. Does the money follow the need?
No.
No.
And on that, I will end my presentation. Thank you.
We're gonna shift into some of the community comments. I do, thank you, Ms. Shepherd, and I'll take personal responsibility for misspelling and apologize for that. And I apologize if this comes off as defensive, but the point that you made about the ten or fifteen teachers that were effective, there are effective teachers in this system. There are effective teachers, there are effective principals in this system, and I just want to make sure, I respect what you've said, but I want to make sure that we also recognize that when we have effective teachers, that there's so much to learn within the system, and I just wanted to say that.
Can I just ask a procedural question? I just want to make sure there were some questions from people, there were specific requests for changes to be made. I want to make sure we captured all of those, and so that, yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be able to forward our recommendations, right, Teri? I mean, so whatever, we'll share with the board, and so if it wasn't all fully captured, then we will share.
Thank you very much. We're gonna take a quick break and then come back for public commentary. We're gonna begin our public commentary, so I'm gonna call the first...
Hello?
Hello? Okay. We're gonna start public commentary now, and what we thought would be nice maybe is the first six speakers, the first six speakers could come sit up at our chair, in the chairs and wait to speak, to be more comfortable. And our first six are Jennifer Roden, Rebecca Camper? Excuse me, your handwriting, I can't read all the names here. Mira Allos? Yeah. Okay, sorry. Mary Brown, Prudence Mullen, and Richard Dyer. If you want to come forward and sit on the six seats here, then you can just talk one at a time. And we do limit public commentary to three minutes, just in an effort to make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak. So, Jennifer Roden?
I work for me.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Roden, and I have lived in Evanston for over ten years. I moved here to enter graduate school at Northwestern, and after earning my master's degree in chemistry, I switched careers and became a teacher through the NU Teach Program and the Chicago Teaching Fellows Program. I've been teaching science in Chicago Public Schools for the past seven years, during which time I've earned a Type 75 Master's in School Administration and started a Project Lead the Way program that teaches pre-engineering to these students at the high school level. It's also during this time that I started my family, which is growing to include three boys. The achievement gap in District 65 is of particular interest to me because my three sons are not the same race. My home school, Lincoln, was overcrowded, so my family had an opportunity to request a different school with some amount of preference, a choice, if you will. The challenge to make a request or selection of schools was more stressful than I ever imagined. Statistically speaking, the highest performing schools in the district would help my oldest, but leave my younger sons in the other category, not just an ethnic minority, but an academic minority as well. Take Lincolnwood, for example, half-white, a quarter-black, ninety-three percent of the white students meeting or exceeding standards, and forty-five percent of the black students meeting and succeeding. Betsy Rhodes, eighty-eight to fifty-two. King Arts, ninety to fifty. This problem is clearly established. My family is clearly stressed. How can I explain why one of my children is given every opportunity to achieve, but his brother is not? How can we give one group of students twice the opportunity to succeed? Our current strategies are not working for every student, and while standards and tests have helped us identify this problem, these tools are not enough to provide us with solutions. As a member of a district, school, and community that is failing our ethnically diverse students, I do not just want data that demonstrates the problem, but solutions that solve the problem. I want to know how my children are going to be prepared for their future, how all my children will be provided not just equal treatment, or the same but equitable treatment resulting in equal opportunities through differentiation into their adulthood. The future seems to be missing in this discussion. As an educated parent and a passionate teacher, I know there's a vast educational field that I believe is being underutilized within our schools here in District 65. STEM education that focuses on establishing a project or performance-based learning environment have been shown to increase all student test scores. This project-based learning environment, however, increases the test scores of the lower-performing students at a higher rate, thus improving all students' educational experiences while closing the achievement gap. STEM is a field of careers with the fastest-growing demand and highest-paying jobs, many of which are not integrating minorities as well. Thus, by implementing a STEM-focused, project-based environment, we would be better preparing our students for the needs of our community, our state, and our country. Programs such as Project Lead the Way, which is currently offered at ETHS, has elementary and middle school programs that have been shown to decrease not only achievement gaps, but gaps within the job market. Thus, I would like to submit both this statement and a flyer containing a few citations to the board for consideration. I hope the board will consider addressing our problem with a solution that benefits all our students as well as our economy, project-based learning STEM education, which is in union with the pillars of an African-centered curriculum. Thank you for your time and attention. If anyone would like a flyer, I do have copies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to remind everyone who's speaking that when the beeper goes off, that's three minutes, and if we can wrap it up, then everyone will have a chance to speak. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name's Rebecca Langen, and I'll be making a formal statement at the next board meeting, so I'll make this very short. I'm here representing King Arts. I have three children in the district, and we've been working, we're in year three of a parent-teacher-student advocacy organization, and we are prepared at the next board meeting to identify ourselves and our goals. And at this point in time, I can't echo the remarks enough of Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Burns and Opal and Sisley Fleming. We are all in. Our organization is all in. We have been paying attention to the needs of our King Arts students. We've been paying attention to the needs of all of our students, and we look forward to doing whatever it takes. Thank you.
Mariah?
Hi, my name is Mira Ante. I'm both a parent of three children that have been here in the district, also a teacher to full disclosure, high school. I'm also a PEG affiliate in a list of other things I won't go into, but I will say that as well, I'm a woman of color and I am Jewish. So, there are a few things that I want to point out as we kind of recap, but not to be redundant, some of the things that were said. One, when we were talking about holding schools responsible, the reality is, is that we look at our climate today, the educational system is similar to our prison systems and what we're seeing here. And if teachers' curriculum were thought of as guns, as our police officers are who are shooting innocent black men, we would be held more accountable than we really are being held. So, I'd like us to really think about how to hold teachers accountable. As a teacher myself, as I've said, we need to think about the curriculum. Let me give you an example. So, my students in my high school, we talk about history, we hold very important seminars discussing things from the Holocaust to slavery in the United States of America. But one of my children go to school, they get reenactments of being on a ship that transports humans in bondage, or possibly even acting out the ways in which a master would... These things are being normed in our classrooms. There's no permission slip coming home to me asking if I would allow my student, my child, to go through that kind of reenactment in the classroom, my babies, my third grader, my fifth grader. Do we ask them to pretend they're in gas chambers, possibly Holocaust survivors? We don't. We don't ever do that. I'd like us to think about the ways in which we've normed the abuse on black bodies in our country, but specifically what's happening in our schools. Our curriculum is so, so distorted. And we could come up with many examples. Think about the message it sends both our white students and our black students, our Latino students, who's in power, who's not. Kids can't understand historically why they're sitting at the back of the bus, or why they're in the front. They just go out on the playground and think, hmm, I don't think I can play with that kid, because it's developmentally inappropriate to actually teach that to second graders. Why are we doing that to our kids? Those are the things I want to think about, so that when we think about then how to change the system, we're actually looking at the curriculum that is hurting them. The other thing that I think that's important is language. So we talked about Gloria Letts in Billings. She would call this a debt, right? So the school's the bank. We owe our kids, right? That's kind of like a dog whistle, it's so weird. All right, just think about that. We owe our students, and it's time for us to give them the value in the classroom that they bring in with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Brown? Mary Brown?
I'm here to speak to the challenges that black students with learning disabilities such as dyslexia face in School District 65. I'm passing out an NBC News article featuring a man named Dr. Sean Robinson. He's originally from Evanston and attended King Lab School. In this article, Dr. Robinson, who is black, intellectually gifted, and has dyslexia, talks about how he was passed through the educational system, graduating from high school barely able to read. After graduating from high school at age 18, he discovered he had dyslexia and finally received the correct educational services. Now he has a PhD in language and literacy. Dyslexia, as you may already know, is a learning disability that is estimated to affect up to one in five students. It's a neurological condition that specifically impacts the ability to read, spell, and write, and it is present in individuals of average to gifted intelligence, regardless of race or socioeconomic status. Longstanding research clearly demonstrates that black male students in particular are erroneously overrepresented in special education programming designed for intellectual, emotional, or behavioral impairment. At the same time, there is currently little to no research on dyslexia in this population. My point is that dyslexia is often not identified in our schools, but particularly for black male students, and District 65 is no exception. I speak to this from personal experience. My son is a black child with dyslexia who attended a District 65 school and was not screened for dyslexia by the school. But you should also know that even when we as parents provided the school with a very clear dyslexia or specific reading disorder, specific reading disability diagnosis from an outside professional upon which an IEP was based, he was still not consistently provided with appropriate reading and writing instruction or accommodations. Many of the reading methods currently being used in District 65 are inappropriate for students with dyslexia. In fact, according to Dr. Sally Shabowitz of Yale University, some of these reading methods can actually further compound dyslexia and this, compound this condition, actually impeding reading, writing, spelling, and writing progress. Please be aware that legislation recently passed in the state of Illinois, as of January 2016, schools are now legally mandated to recognize the diagnosis of dyslexia. This is important to identify early and to promptly follow up with appropriate multisensory reading remediation, specific teaching instruction, and accommodations in the classroom. In my opinion, District 65 is woefully behind the times with regard to all of these educational services, but especially for students who concurrently face racial bias in our schools. My hope is that District 65, the school board, will appoint, receive feedback from, and implement changes in this school district based on recommendations of a committee that specifically includes parents of black students with dyslexia and other learning disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Prudence?
Thank you. My name is Prudence Molin, and I'm Evanston resident citizen since here since 1982. I had a niece and a nephew who graduated from Evanston schools, did very well, they were white. And this year, I've been, and they're going on to be successful in their lives, this year, this is my second year of retirement from Loyola University as a professor of history and women's studies, gender studies, and peace studies. And so I set myself the responsibility to do a self-study of racial equity in Evanston, because I'm here and I haven't been paying attention, and I thought I better learn. So I have benefited enormously from Opal in the direction I have taken, and I am utterly appalled at the details of the report that I saw last fall and that I see tonight. And I, so, I have realized, and even tonight, I realize these wonderfully strong statements, it's very painful to realize I have lived this long in denial, not on the intellectual level, but on the emotional level. What does it really mean to want a society that realizes the values we hold as Americans, let alone Evanstonians? So I just want to say that I think that all, that all staff and all teachers, I replicate that, should have to go, engage in culturally relevant education every year. It's an ongoing education. We've had centuries, if we're right, of learning the structures of inequality, and a few years of practice and learning will not hurt any of us. And I think black and brown teachers should be able to decide whether that's good for them too, and they want to be part of that community, or whether they have other things that they want to do for their professional development. So that's really important. I also think that the education that we give to those who are most diverse from the standard benefits everybody. Every time I go down a curb that's not above, I think, thank God for the persons with disability who had to get this for me. So I think it's a mistake to think that our white students are the best achievers, even though we use those measures and that's the way we culturally understand it. Their lives are very limited by our limits as white people, in helping them understand the full richness of American history.
Amen. Thank you. Richard Dyer?
I'm going to stand and address everybody, because I'm a sigma, and the letter sigma signifies change. And there's a big change that needs to happen, just in the very appearance of this room. I'm all about role modeling. We shouldn't have set up the desks, period, with people's backs facing the audience. Everybody is equal, so everybody should have the opportunity to face who it is that they're talking to, just role modeling. Now, when we get to the issue of K through 12, I'm a 6 through 12 teacher. I don't have a horse in this race. My horse is in 202, and she's doing quite well, and I'm very proud to say that. But the thing is, is I came through this system, K through 12, and I can honestly say that the system that I came through, it did me pretty well. I went to Southern Illinois, got a bachelor's degree. Went to Chicago State, got a master's degree. Going to Concordia, getting another master's in educational leadership. So I know what this system is capable of, and I'm very proud to say that. But at the same time, we're looking at an issue that's called disenfranchisement, and it's very simple, and I wrote it down because I didn't want to forget anybody. Mr. Fred Hunter pointed it out earlier, and I just want to heart back on it, too. Cultural relevance, rigor, those things are the things that lead up to relationships with our students in the classrooms, and those are the things that we need to, as teachers, enforce. Oliver Ruff, Quincy Carter, Clayton Taylor, William Branch, Fred Spence, Sam White, Don Michelin, Cynthia Bumry, Mike Winn, Vernon Clark, Janice Webb, Ray Aiden, John Phillips, these were all people that I interacted with in my K through 12 experience that taught me on a daily basis that I can be whatever I wanted to be. And I think that I've done pretty well. And I think that our kids have the ability to do this, do exactly and turn out the same way that I've turned out. But we've got to build in relevance in the classroom, and that relevance will lead to building a better relationship with students, black and white, and those relationships will lead to rigor in the classroom. It's all relative, it's symbiotic, and we all have to take responsibility for this as a community from the top on down. We all have to. And like I said, I'm just getting here in February, and I'm looking at these numbers, and it's appalling. And we've got, I worked at Urban Prep in the city that's responsible for over 300 African-American males graduating from Inglewood, and that's a part of that. So I know it can be done. I know it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, the next six, thanks very much to you all for speaking. And now Kate Ellison, Alice Berry, Michelle Cooney, Martha Jarrett, and Michael Neighbors. Did I miss somebody? Oh, I missed you. Sorry. Missy Gibbs? Okay, we'll start here, and then we'll try a few more names. So it's Alice Berry's first.
That's me. I'm a writer and a shadow work facilitator. I've lived in Evanston just four years. But I, my professional expertise is in the human unconscious, and in response to a sort of spiritual experience about a year ago, I started on this journey into the issue of race, racism. I sometimes call it the University of Diversity, because it involves so much study. I'm also here as a supporter of Opal, and I want to lift up the things they said, what incredibly series of powerful comments they made here. In my own, in my own journey in the last year, it feels as if I've acquired a new set of eyes, and I see the world so differently. I see the lies that I was raised with, I see the biases that I was taught. It's a sort of chain of logic, you know, as I start exploring this stuff, there's this chain of logic. Race doesn't actually exist, it's a social construct. Whiteness doesn't exist, it was, it's a social construct. It was created in 1681. The word Caucasian is a scam. The word, the word racism is scary, and for years I could hardly hear it. And I want to reach out to anybody who's here who identifies as white. This is scary stuff, this is hard stuff, it brings up a lot of hard feelings. I'm hoping that I might eventually be able to write something that'll help other people with some of the feelings that come up as we look into this stuff. One of the people who's expert on this, Dr. Robin D'Angelo, is going to be speaking here in Evanston a week from Thursday at Garrett Theological Seminary. I encourage anybody who can to get there. She wrote a, one of the things that woke me up a year ago was her article called "White Fragility," which is her term for the resistance that a lot of white people hit when they start hearing about racism. She wrote a book, very powerful book, called "What It Means to Be White." So I guess where I, I had something prepared here, but I don't know how useful it is. I want to say that racism is here in this room, and one of the places it is, is in me, and it's in my brain, and it's in my heart. It's in my brain in the form of implicit biases or unconscious biases that I can't even control even when I try. And the, if you, if you haven't read the book Blink, it does a fantastic job of introducing you to the concept of unconscious biases.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just end by encouraging you to take diversity trainings. There's stuff that I don't believe we can really learn effectively except through trainings for people who've been doing this for a long time.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Dana? I think you're next.
Hello? I just want to thank you for giving this focus to a topic that you see cannot be addressed in one meeting. And I recognize that this board, and many of the boards that have come before you, have spent hundreds of hours talking about the achievement gap, talking about solutions, but like Roger Williams, I think, said earlier, what are we going to do about it differently? And when I said "we," I mean "we." I would really encourage as many parents who are here, maybe for the first time at a board meeting, to please continue coming and sharing your voices and your experiences to help guide our board. I want to thank the board for approaching this with an open mind, because I think that a lot of times when people are explaining their experiences, people think it's complaining, but to look at it in the historical context that it is, is really critical and necessary to understanding how that feels for people coming from their different positions. And I just want to tell another story, because I shared a story at last Monday's meeting about how my children, who brought their cold lunches to school, were automatically separated from their classmates who were in the hot lunch line, because just for the sake of efficiency, they wanted to move those kids with the lunches, you know, to their table, and the kids who went through the hot lunch line sat at a separate table. So before they even knew what was happening, there were divides across socioeconomic and racial lines. And I really, really, I asked you last week, I encourage you to please look at the entire plan with regard to all of the things in the budget that continually divide, or label, or separate our kids, and the things that build community and bring them together, like the arts, like sports, like programs. There's such a huge disparity in the resources of each school in this district, and I totally acknowledge and appreciate the challenges you face with the budget crisis that we have. But like Roger said, what are you going to do differently? You've got to guard that budget, and if you mean it, you've got to show them the money. You've got to keep it in really looking at solutions for racial equity. One other thing I wanted to mention is, I noticed when our kids started kindergarten here that there were kids who were kind of pushing their limits, you know, like kindergartners do. They were kind of with this mischievous glint in their eye, pushing the limit, like, can I get away, seeing what they could get away with? And they would get scolded or reprimanded, and I noticed countless, I observed countless examples of times where my white children were praised for doing things differently or creatively, but their black classmates were scolded, punished, sometimes sent to the principal's office for not following directions. And there was a number of kids in my kids' classes who were kind of regularly sent to the principal's office or regularly being disciplined for misbehaving in class. And I just want to add, those kids, from kindergarten to first grade, they went from having that glint in their eye to being mad, to looking down, to having their fists balled, to feeling so angry, and I thought you could write their story right now. So please, think about those kids, and think about what we need to do as a community to fully engage them and give them the opportunities for learning and succeeding.
Thank you. Is Deanna Williams here? Heather Sweeney? Deanna? No? Yes? Okay. Heather Sweeney? Deanna? No? Yes? Okay.
Good evening. At first, I wasn't going to speak, but then again, I thought about why not. My name is Deanna Williams, and I am a mother of an African-American student who attends one of the District 65 schools. Also, I'm also a mother of a 27-year-old who also went through the district and a high school. The difference between the two, at the time, when my son, my oldest son, was attending Evanston Township, he was a very excellent student. And the reason why my son was an excellent student is because I had to quit my job, and I had to stay on him, and I had to be at the school every day. He didn't get the proper education that he needed. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I think that what we need to do is have a program that will implement more parent involvement with their kids. I've heard a lot of people in here speak about this teacher's fault, teacher's this, teacher's that. I agree in one retrospect. But on the other hand, we do need to have more parent involvement and some fundings to get more of our parents involved and getting them educated. Now, had I not stayed home and worked from home, I don't think my son would have been a success story as far as his education is concerned. I had to push for him to have AP classes. He's a, to me, I call him the walking calculator. He's very excellent in math, and I'm proud of him. However, my other concern is, is that my 11-year-old, who is going through the district, and I'm extremely afraid to send him to Evanston Township High School. I am at a point where I'm begging for money to send him outside, or I had contemplated having a meeting with the board to see if you all will be able to give me funding to send my son to a school where I know that will fight for his education, because I don't think Evanston Township is appropriate place for his education. And I'm sure a lot of us, as far as African-American parents, could perhaps agree with me. But that's my story. And I would like to see more of parent involvement, having us to come to the school more. You all can come out to our homes, you know, give us more support in areas that will help with education and parenting as well. And that's pretty much all I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Heather?
My name is Heather Sweeney. I'm a graduate of District 65, and I have kids at Washington and Nichols. The author Chimanda Ngozi Adichie has said that "The goal of many conversations in the United States is not truth, it's comfort, and we must break that mold in order to make progress." I'm glad for this meeting where people have talked honestly, and I'm assuming others have listened openly about how race actually plays out in our schools. As we've talked about, because we don't share the same experiences and we don't share the same history across races, it's naive to think that we can live in a diverse town and have equity without these conversations and the subsequent action. Without these conversations, it's easy and dangerous to blame the gap on individual black children, individual black families, individual circumstances, instead of acknowledging history and current systems of racism and white supremacy that run deep in our institutions and individual white people. And not by choice, but because it's so deeply embedded in our American culture. Tonight is a piece of what it takes to work through these complex problems, and we know that these problems aren't only in Evanston, which is why this conversation is not about pointing fingers at individual board members or administration. But it is about the opportunity in front of us to make changes and to be a national model by addressing race explicitly and with urgency, and to conquer this achievement gap. There's momentum, and as a parent in the district, I expect the district to use its power to make an enormous impact and to continue to fund these values we've said over and over tonight that we hold. We know that there's tough choices ahead with the state of the budget that will test our commitment to equity, and I expect the district to keep equity a priority as we face these choices, and as Teri said, to make sure the money follows the need.
Thank you. Lonnie Wilson?
Hello, my name is Lonnie Wilson. The last time I was here, I kind of called you guys co-conspirators into a, in a crime. And I don't know if it was received in the right way, because I'm, I'm, I'm the angry black man. You know, I am an alumni of District 65. I'm also alumni of 202. I did my master's and PhD work at the University of Church and Dodge. Many of you don't know that university, but I, I want to, I want to explain to you guys that what's happened here is a multi-generational trauma. When you start talking about family involvement, and these same families, my family got here 100 years ago, these same families have faced these issues for 100 years. And what you're asking people to do is to have some kind of really nice shiny worksheet that will clean up a garbage pile that boards like you and the boards before you helped create. And the problem here is that this is going to take as much investment as there was non-investment. And as we sit here and have wonderful little conversations about numbers and all these other things, this is a systemic problem. And it will take systems and communities to get them changed. And the real systems like you, District 65, you're going to have to do radical changes. These aren't something you can clean up easily. And I don't want you to, you know, to think that these people that are being blamed, because I keep hearing over and over, people keep telling me, even black people tell me, that it's the families. You know, I grew up in the Logan family. I have some very successful people. My uncle was the first African-American chief of police. But I'm the other Logan. I'm the Logan who went out into the street and sold dope and did things that none of you probably are aware of. I'm the Logan who, after I finished messing up, I created programs that family-focused that helped people like Danny Featherston grow into a really strong man. And even my brother Omar there spent a little time in some of my programs. So what I'm trying to tell you is that intellect isn't always, like, ordained from groups like this. My intellect wasn't, I didn't get it from some university, I got it from life. And we need to make opportunities for people in the best ways we can, and everybody needs to get in it. And I hate to say this to you, but since these systems robbed us for 100 years, I hate to say it, but you owe these same communities that you've damaged for 100 years, you owe them 100 years' worth of investment. And that's all I got to say.
Anna Thompson, oh, Anna Thompson is next. Darlene Marshall? Robin Robinson? If anyone wants to come up. Lisa Laudrayman? Mitzi Gibbs? Oh, I think Madeline Decray is gone. Did she, she left? Kamara Seismar? Okay, let's, yeah.
I want to say thank you to the board again for what you're doing. As an African-American parent, I appreciate what you've done here tonight, and I hope that there will be much more of that. I know that the African-American community cannot fix this problem. So we don't need African-American board members to make it happen. I think if we all work together, we can change what's going on, because it's really heartbreaking. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I do have one question for the board, but I wanted to share just a little bit of history before I ask you the question. So I'm a product of District 65, a product of District 202. While a student in Evanston, some of my teachers brought out the best in me. Others caused me to completely shut down. I can give you an example, as a senior at Evanston, my counselor told me that she thought it was best that I go to a technical school and get a certificate. And she continued to work in the district for at least 20 years after I left. And everyone, well, not everyone, so many individuals who I've spoken to who had her as a counselor was told the exact same information. A very good friend of mine had the same counselor, told her she wanted to go to the University of Wisconsin. She laughed in my friend's face. Not only did my friend go to the University of Wisconsin, she got her BA, her master's, and then came back to District 65 and was that counselor's peer. So I don't buy that African-Americans can't achieve. And the reason I say that is because I'm of Haitian descent. So when I go to Haiti, every single doctor is black, every single lawyer is black, every single teacher, administrator, lawyer, everyone who has accomplished is black. So I don't understand why I come to District 65, and for some reason, the same black race cannot accomplish. So to me, in my limited understanding, it has to be the people who are teaching them. There are wonderful teachers in District 65, because I've experienced some of them. But I can tell you that there are some staff members that we absolutely have to hold accountable for the inability to assist African-American students in being successful. My children have some of those students, teachers, and I'm battling with them one-on-one, and I have time to battle. So I can only imagine parents who don't have the time to battle. And so that's why we need the board. And so I just, you know, I don't want to beg, because my sister said we shouldn't beg, but we need you. We need you. And so my question is, since my children don't see an equitable amount of African-American teachers, I heard what HR said about hiring more, but would you be willing, as a board, to commit to a percentage of increase of African-American teachers and administrators? Because I can tell you, the ones that we have, we have some people, unfortunately, who are working very hard to get rid of them, and it's disheartening. Thank you very much.
Good evening, it's very, very late. My name is Kamara Seismar. I am from the Seismar Lefoun family of Evanston, a traditional Evanston family. My family, my mother and father attended 65 and ETHS, I did, and my daughter did, and now my grandchild is in the school system. I spent a lot of time searching for a teacher who could simply, simply teach reading, how to read, is what I was looking for. Sadly, I did not find it in your school district. I spent, I retired from teaching from Chicago Public Schools in 2005. I spent 10 years subbing in this system. So I think I know the system pretty well. I retired as assistant principal of John Marshall High School. My findings demonstrated to me that we are not teaching how to read, how to read. You are teaching reading for information. Our children are not learning how to read. There's only two things we teach, skills and concepts. You are over-concept teaching and have thrown the skills away. That is truly unfortunate. My grandson is now 10 years old. He was recently diagnosed with dyslexia. Now, he's had a reading specialist since kindergarten, and no one could tell me that until he's in fifth grade. That's a disgrace. I am so glad the lady talked about dyslexia. I am spending a lot of money on my grandson learning to read, a lot of money, and I'm really mad about it. I really am one of the people that would like to have my tax dollars back, because I needed to educate my grandson. Dyslexia, the basic system for dyslexia is based on Orton and Wilson reading program. Do you know what they teach? Phonics! Phonics is the primary cause of not having a true phonics program. I am mad, very mad, angry, upset. Can't you tell? Anyway, I do not put any teachers at fault. I've been in their classrooms, I've seen what they do. Some of them, as the young lady said, are excellent. Some of them need more monitoring. Some of the principals need to know what to look for. All of these things need to happen. In your program, that framework that you set up to do is exactly what the teachers have been doing. It's just now written out for them. I would like for you to revisit the kindergarten part that says they don't, they have to wait to January to start doing guided reading. Don't do that. They need to start guiding reading as soon as they finish taking that test that they take, which I don't have my notes, so that I can repeat them, but you know what I'm talking about. The other problem, I'm so glad I did not teach in your district, because this is a very, very difficult district for a teacher to juggle. Those kids who come in kindergarten, ready to read, some of, most of your kids who come in kindergarten already know how to read. They can read, for Christ's sakes, but you haven't set up anything for them. You don't have a gifted program, you don't do accelerated teaching, you're doing lockstep. Everybody's doing the same thing. That's ridiculous. These kids who do not know how to do sitting in a chair are appropriate for kindergarten or anything. You don't have anything for them. There's nothing in place for them. What happened to placing, leveling? What happened to teaching a child where their abilities, what happened to all of that? This is not rocket science. Don't throw away things that we know that works. And I really don't have enough time in this meeting to tell you everything I would like to tell you about reading that you're not doing. But I had to come forward to say, please teach these children how, how to read. Once you teach them how to read, they can teach themselves, for Christ's sakes. They can learn how to read for information and knowledge. And the child has to read. The teacher cannot read to them and expect them to learn to read. We're not earthworms. They have to say the words, and they have to say the sounds, and they have to actually read. These libraries you have, these children can't read this book, independent reading, they're just sitting there. And if children cannot read, then there are discipline problem in the school. That's all they know to do, is act out.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yancey Hughes. I am a parent of two boys, a seven-year-old who's second grader at Lincoln, and a seventh grader at Nichols. And I'm coming to speak from a slightly different angle. It's regarding gifted learning and Project Excite that is run through Northwestern University, which targets gifted, targeted gifted learning students from grade three through 12, and they offer them Saturday enrichment programs. Well, it came to our knowledge, and I think there's maybe some other parents in here who also have kids who are in Project Excite too. We found out, announced us that the program's being discontinued because, as we were told, the children don't have the numbers that qualifies them for continued participation with Center for Talent Development. My son has had As and Bs throughout his learning in all classes, so we really don't know what's going on. So we're coming to you as a board to help us find out what's behind it, what we can do to maybe get it reestablished. And I'll just mention that the program was disbanded shortly after it received a grant of $2 million that was targeted for Project Excite. So we are hoping to meet with- So, we are hoping to meet with Professor Peterson to find out about it, but at this point, we have no knowledge of what's going to happen. It was established to help bridge the gap, and it's just funny that gifted students are no longer given the opportunity that they were targeted for. So, if we could, at some point, meet and find out what's going on, it'd be helpful to us. Thank you.
If I missed anyone on the list, you're welcome to come up. I think I read everyone's names. If not, we will go on to the comments, questions, and answers from the board.
Good evening, Board. We're pretty late. I'm not here to beat up on you anymore. I see a couple of my neighbors on the board here. I am in solidarity with Opal and many of the other groups that are here. Actually, I come with sort of a solution. I heard a lot of talking about, for people with feelings and emotions and talking about the problem, but solutions are also something we need to be thinking about. And I'm kind of a solutions-oriented guy. I like thinking about ways that we can better things. I've been leading a small group of folks who I won't out on an idea about a charter, a charter school. And this is more for the parents that are here who are really concerned about doing something out of the box and something very different. If there's anybody in this room that's interested, doesn't matter what color you are, doesn't matter who you are, let's talk afterwards. Let me just take your name, and let's just talk afterwards. And I got an idea, but we have some resources within the town. We have some resources that are outside of the town. But when we talk about charter, charter is publicly funded as well. And since we can't get it done within our box, maybe we have to build another box and think a little bit differently about that. So, that's my offering. And I want the board to know that people are thinking outside of the box, parents. It's a group of parents, just thinking outside of the box. And some are, you know, been in and out of the group, and I'm adding people to the group. But we want to help. I got a son that I'm very concerned about that he's just not getting it, and I'm doing everything I can. He's a good reader and all that, doesn't want to do math. He's great at sports, you know, typical story. And he's not a free lunch kid. Not that there's anything wrong with that because I grew up on the west side of Chicago where that's all we had. That's all I had. I came to Evanston thinking this was some kind of special place that could, you know, fix a lot of my ills. And that's not the case. We're just as, you know, hurt as anywhere else. And we have challenging times, just like anywhere else. So, I put that at your feet to think about that, to think outside of the box, Board, to think outside of the box. And there's any parents who have the guts to stick around and just give me your name and give me a contact, and I'll be in touch with you, and we can go from there. But there's some incredible options out there. I think it's time, and I'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so this concludes our public commentary, and we are on to Board of Education comments, questions, and answers. Take a bite there.
I will start, especially because I may have to leave early, which is not at all a reflection of my commitment to this issue because I have a babysitter at home. But, sorry, can you hear me? First of all, thank you to everybody who's here who's stayed till this late hour and shared your thoughts and shared your comments. It does mean a lot to us, means a lot to me personally. I'm glad that we're hearing from you, and, you know, this is, as we said at the policy committee meeting last week, this is a start to a conversation, and it needs to continue. And, you know, we look to you to hold us accountable to make sure that it continues. So, thank you for being here and for staying here. Thank you to the administration for putting together this report, and I know a lot of time and effort went into it, so I appreciate that a lot. I know there will probably be a lot of like, you know, I had a lot of sort of specific comments written in here that I don't necessarily want to go into now, but one thing, I appreciated seeing some of the action items, which wasn't in our initial report, it was in the slides. But I do want to push us to, you know, some community members asked us, you know, as a board, what are we going to do differently? And I want us to put, the one thing that I feel like there's not enough of, even though this is a racial equity issue that we're talking about, is really enough specifics around the idea of race and what are we going to do specifically around race to address equity. And one thing that I think is, was conspicuously lacking, we're talking about getting families engaged and trying to, you know, show children that they have value. Yet, there is no mention of the fact that we still disproportionately bus black children out of their neighborhoods to go to schools around Evanston. And I think that is a huge value statement on our part. It may not be, I don't think any of us intends to be making that value statement, and it's been going on for so many years, and none of us had anything to do with that. But, you know, closing a foster school, but we're all, by not talking about it, by not acknowledging that it is the elephant in the room and that there is, you know, it's not just the story that Ms. Campbell spoke about, the segregation in the lunchroom, but even, you know, the kids who have to race out right after school to get on the bus and can't stay on the playground to associate with their peers and with their families and with the teachers and staff members who might be on the playground. I mean, I think that is, we need to address the way busing works in this community. If we're really going to have a talk about racial equity, that has to be a part of it. So, I found that conspicuously absent. So, I will let others talk more specifically about other things that are in there, but I think...
Candace?
So, I do want to thank everyone for being here, but it is not easy to walk in someone else's shoes, right? We have different experiences. This is part of helping us understand one another and understand everything that came before, which we may or may not have been a part of. And we're not completely, you know, where do we go from here? I think there were a lot of challenges to us with questions that we need to reflect on and think about. And I really appreciate especially the really concrete ideas. Thank you, Sergio. I mean, when I look at the, oh, I know the data is bad, but I do want to point out one thing that I found somewhat, I'm the eternal optimist, I guess. In Figure 76A, which is on page 14, we looked at, we look, we look at TRA benchmarks of students that were kindergarten-ready and then break that out by race. And for students that are kindergarten-ready, the gap is, I mean, is three points or less from kindergarten through third grade. So, for me, you know, and I'm a consultant, like, I want to look at where the levers, where, the levers are kindergarten readiness. And then I see, we have 50% of our black students in this building, right? 50% of our kindergarten black students are in this building. So, we need to take ownership of ensuring that all of them are as ready to enter kindergarten, understanding their ISO is only one measure of overall kindergarten readiness. So, I think there's one thing that more needs to take on is really also, you know, looking, taking a hard look with the administration at early childhood, what more can we be doing there? And many of your ideas, you know, strategies that we can consider those. It also makes me think that, a point that Tracy had mentioned before, what would it take when we do know we're getting closer to registration earlier? If we know 100% of our kids are getting registered earlier, why don't we do some of that testing at that point of registration? And maybe we have three to six months to prepare for bringing kids into kindergarten and apply necessary interventions there. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but I think that's something that we should look at because we, where, you know, where our heart is, that's where our money goes, right? That's, I mean, that's a difficult thing, sorry. So, I think, oh, am I not even being heard? All those nice things I just said, all those good things I just said?
On TV, they couldn't hear you.
On TV, they couldn't hear me, okay. Well, that's probably not many people. Okay, so those are two things that I, in terms of actual actions, I think we should take. And I agree with Suni. I think I, my kids went to go to Kingsley and Haven, and I look at equity a little bit differently because I see that 40% of our students, our low-income students and many of our black students are in non-Titel One schools. And the resources are clustered according to need, but it's based on, in many cases, it's based on Title One, kind of meeting Title One standards. And that's not just district resources, right? I mean, if you look at Title One funding, it's really only $200,000 to $300,000 a year. It's really not a huge amount that we use for reading specialists primarily in those schools. But the types of identity generating programs like YOU, like consistent before and after-school programmings, we're talking about, as Mr. Hunter had said, bringing Brooks and Breakfast to Lincolnwood, and we're looking at Kingsley as well. To me, I mean, those are the things we need to look at equity in terms of, and it's, it shows itself in the scoring. When you look at the gap being larger in those schools, we have to look at equity of those resources. And maybe looking at our attendance area maps is part of that so that we can do a better job of not only reducing busing, but applying resources where the greatest needs are and bringing some of that need together. So, those are some initial thoughts that I had. I also think better support for families. I don't, I think this is a place where we need to partner. I think a lot about Mr. Brown, Kevin Brown, and the team of youth outreach workers in Evanston and the work that they are doing day in and day out and engaging youth. And I think, why would we not do the same thing with parents? And why could we not partner? We're working on this in Cradle to Career, so it's a little, a little bit of a push for something that is near and dear to my heart. But why should we not have parents and helping parents navigate the system, helping parents access resources that are in this district? We have, or in this community, as a city, we don't, we do not have a social services support syst, system of social services supports. We do not have a system. We have lots of disparate resources. And we try, we do try, and community schools will continue to try to bring those resources together, I think, in a more holistic way. But I think that's something we, as a community, need to tackle because we have, we call ourselves resource-rich, but the resources aren't getting where they need to go. So, that's another kind of out-of-the-box idea, as it were. But I think most and foremost, I just want to thank everyone here to committing to being here and then also to continuing this journey with us because we need help. You know we need help, right? And our children need help. And we need your guidance and the experience you have, the experience your children are having so that we can continue to improve our policies and be accountable to you.
A thank you to all of you and the people who have had to leave. Obviously, it's incredibly late. We do learn from these conversations. And actually, I think last Monday at our policy committee, because it was such an exchange, and even though tonight hasn't been sort of back-and-forth exchange, I feel like it's similar in that we're listening and trying to learn from each other. So, I appreciate what I, what feels to me like a shift in conversation. I think it's very positive. You know, I hope that you hear from this board that we get that the system has racism built within it. I don't know that we explicitly say that, but we know that there are structures that need to be dismantled and that we, in our role, have to do what is in our power to change that. And I think I speak for the board in saying we're committed to doing that. As a parent, excuse me, I do just want to share, you know, my own personal perspective as the father of a now-young black man who's 11, but looks more like he's probably 13, maybe 14, seeing that racism and more broadly, not just talking about school, but when he's in a bookstore and he's carrying a book and the clerk comes over and says, "He looks like he's going to steal that book." When, on the flip side, we put the picture of Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Jr. and President Obama, right after Obama's election, above his bed. And the first night it was there, the first comment out of his mouth was, "I can be president someday too." And I share those two examples because they're a really important contrast of what we have to undo and what we have to put in place in terms of the right modeling and the expectations that people have talked about so often, allowing them to dream big. So, there was a question from Mr. Williams, I believe. I'm not sure if he's still here.
No, thank you.
So, maybe someone can help make sure he gets this answer. And there were others that raised this, but I did just want to briefly touch on what we're doing that's different, that's different, that's not reflected in the scores that we saw, and then some other work that hasn't been started yet. But I just wanted to highlight some really important things. This year, we brought in two more black principals than we had the prior year. I think that's a really important step because they have a say, a strong say in the hiring process of teachers. That was intentional, and it was an improvement. We actually did bring in a third, but it was a third who was replacing another black principal. So, it was a net gain of two black principals. The culturally relevant instruction is being focused on in a very different way this year, not just at Lincolnwood. I think we have three schools, and I think there will be more schools next year. And the suspension rates, just a year and a half ago is when the board mandated the policy, where since then, we have seen a 70% drop in the days lost. The gap is still way too far, but the trajectory that we will continue to monitor is a significant improvement. Some of the upcoming work that we haven't really started yet, we are going to be partnering with YOU on, and tell me if this is right, Board, a community school at an elementary school. We don't know which one that is, but we know that will bring more resources. If you think about YOU's target schools, we can imagine that it would reach probably a substantial, substantial black population. We're still working to make enhancements to the ACC program, still TBD, but that is something the board is committed to. I was right there with you, Candace. The one glimmer of hope that stood out to me is early childhood. And what I would say is, we have to take it beyond what, which programs live in our building. We need to make sure that every early childhood provider understands what kindergarten-ready looks like and that we train them because we don't necessarily, right now, have the capacity to take on every student, but we can sort of train the trainer so that they do. We also know that from past assessment that children who are in home daycare as opposed to a formal early childhood program... to a formal early childhood program don't fare as well. And so, in my view, we really need to, if we're using that data, get every child into a formal early childhood program. Seth Green from YOU has come here and said, "So much of the gap is attributable to that early childhood preparation." So for me, that is the biggest takeaway from this report. Probably the biggest thing that I heard tonight, as a learning, is that we, as a board, have to commit to the funding following the need, in a different way than we have done in the past. And I think we are aware of that, but I don't know that, at a very granular level, it actually shapes our budget decisions. So that is from the conversation what I learned most. And the last thing I would just say is more of a question. We had a lot of questions posed to us, and I feel like we need to try to answer as many of them as we can. So I, I don't know what that looks like, but I would just ask Paul if you could make sure that through the, the minutes that were taken, that we can have some written response, you know, even if it's just a couple of sentences for the, the questions that were posed through, through the panel, or through the, the public speakers, I think that would be great. And now I will stop.
Omar?
Hi.
Okay. My thoughts. So, coming into the meeting, as the only black board member, I have two kids in District 65. You know, there were a lot of thoughts about how, I guess, I was going to handle this, how I was going to respond, what I was going to say. I'm sure there's a lot of people in the audience who are, you know, they want me to say A, B, C, or D. And I would say, one of the great things about being myself is that I'm my own thinker. And so, I would start with just my assessment of the report in general. And so I think the report is a good report, but it's a numbers report. And I think back at, you know, working, we had this consultant who used to give us these numbers all the time, and he'd just give us numbers, and they never really gave us, like, the next step. So after reading it, I just always, I feel like there's something else missing. And I don't know if it's a, another meeting that we need to have, that's sort of outcome-based. I mean, we had a lot of suggestions, I think a lot of people have a lot of ideas, but I feel like it's good to get the numbers, but I, you know, I would say Candace hit on it, Richard hit on it, the whole pre-K stuff. I would have loved if the report would have said something like, "So we know that a majority of the blacks pre-K students that become kindergarteners are coming from JEH." We would, we meaning the administration, or we meaning the board, would say, "We can commit to," or our outcome should be, "to somehow solve that problem, and that becomes the model that we can then deploy through the rest of the city." And so, I was, I would say that's the, the one thing I feel like the report, and I don't know, maybe the report wasn't meant, this was a data report, and I know you're a data guy, so I just feel like we're, we're missing the analysis and the outcomes that come next. And so, that was it. The other thing I think it was missing, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but we call it an achievement report, and I just felt like there was nothing about successful students. And I felt like, I mean, there are, you know, people talk about it, there are black students that come through this district that are top-notch, and I felt like I didn't hear their voice or their story. And so, and I don't know how you want to frame that, but I, I just felt like we should also talk about the successes. And not that, I'm not saying talk about them, like, ignore the issues, but we, we need to highlight that as well, because this just becomes, you know, I saw some people angry up here. I mean, it becomes an angry, if you have to, you know, I think Terry said, "If you have to peel through 40 through three pages of this, you become angry unless you can try to find the opportunities," and page after page. So I think there was a great opportunity we missed, where we could just talk about, let's talk about the successful students. And then I also thought we're missing a qualitative piece. And I know that, that's, I'm not trying to give you guys more work, but I'm just saying that, you know, the numbers don't really speak to the voices, and so we heard voices, but it, there's like a disconnect where we have the numbers, but we don't have the voices. And, you know, I think I, Roger left, but last Thursday, we had a conversation outside. One of the things I talked to him about was, "I would love to somehow figure out, grab 10 top students, 10 middle students, 10 students doing very poorly, and let's talk to them about, you know, what are the kids doing that is successful, what their families doing, try to put together some factors, you know, that we can use to help correct the problem." Because, you know, as people have said, the numbers are the numbers. We need to start thinking about what are the outcomes to change them. And then I will end on blaming families. And I'm not saying anyone blame families, but that's what you often hear. And I think that, that, that comes to sort of an environment thing, where we need to figure out how we can make, and not necessarily this building, but every building welcoming to families. So that way, families want to talk about it, want to be involved. And even if they, I feel like even if they don't want to come to the building, and I'm not saying we go to every house, we just need to figure out a way to connect parents and connect families to the problem, so that way, it, it produces a good outcome. So.
Candace?
Nicole. So, just to second all of my fellow board members, thanks to everyone for being here. Thank you for those of you who were at the meeting last Monday night. I think I'm going to be slightly redundant, but hopefully put my own voice on some of the comments that have already been made. So I think that, that this is Monday night, last Monday night and tonight, is sort of a tip of the iceberg feeling for me. I think there's general agreement that we have, we know that we have a lot more work to do. There's a lot to digest, and, and I'm thankful to Richard for putting us on task for what those questions are and answering them. Because I think there's some commitments that we need to rethink and make, personal commitments as board members about training, that we, we may want to look into our, for ourselves. As Cicely knows, the government alliance on race and equity is meeting in Chicago downtown. It was meeting today. Several people in this room may have attended today. And there are, there are groups like Pacific Education Group, but there are other groups like GARR, and Race Forward, and others, but we probably need to figure out our personal commitments to doing our own training as we go forward. So I'm going to second the comments about the JEH and Head Start programs, and I really hope that we can think about making a commitment to, you know, for the outcomes for the, the kids that are in the JEH and Head Start programs, and really take a deeper dive, look at the curriculum, at parent engagement, and all of the different things that are, are factors in a child's success for the programs that we actually have control over. There are, the, the board members know, because I, I sent an email on Friday, I agree that the report was terrific for the accurate data that we needed to have this conversation, but it was missing in what I call a theory of change. We, and it's something that, it is, it's the bottom of the iceberg, because it's going to take many of us to figure out what that theory of change is. And it relates to, you know, the fact that there is no single point of responsibility. You can't blame, you know, there's no one place where you can lay all the blame. You know, it's the factors of structural and institutional racism, but it's parents, it's teachers, it's the administrators, it's our kids themselves. And figuring out sort of, you know, what is our theory of change that's not just the factual report, or the list of interventions that we currently have? And how does that add up to something that might take us, you know, not a 30 more years, right? It's, it's been since 1986 that this has been an issue in Evanston, so let's hope it doesn't take another 30-plus years to figure out what some of the, the ways to move the needle are. I want to second what Omar said about what are the characteristics and the conditions for student success? I, I don't feel like I know enough about that, and I totally applaud talking to kids about that, and thinking about the way, you know, what we can learn from, from them. Trying to think of other questions, and I, I'm not going to go through the list of questions that I, that I made. But I'm going to end with the, you know, one of my personal favorite moments tonight was being inspired by Fred Hunter and the passion around lifelong learning, because it's what, it's the business we're all in right now, right? For our kids and for ourselves is, you know, how we learn together personally, and, and what difference it makes. So I just was really inspired by his, his own passion, being an educator, so, thank you.
I feel like I'm undergoing another educational process. Started last Monday night, it continues on. I'm not going to repeat what anybody up here said, because I agree with everybody, except that I do want to defend the report. Depressing as it was, it's what we asked for, we needed a baseline to start. We needed to know accurately where we were and how big the task is in front of us. It's depressing, because it's big. It's huge. But I heard somebody say, I can't remember which speaker it was, that so many of you feel your children are undervalued, and if there's one thing that we could change in our hearts, is to recognize whether we're, are we indeed undervaluing them? Is that what we're doing? Or is it that we're just ignorant, I guess, you know, as teachers, as board members, as administrators? And, and how to show how we value them. I mean, maybe that's the thing, we don't, we don't know how to do it. So the call for training, for diversity training, for PEG training, for training that teaches us how to be less ignorant in that aspect, and value all of our children equally, is something that I, I think we can do. I'm going to be optimistic like Candace, I think we can do it. But it's a big task. So thank you all so much for coming and staying and enduring all of this, it just really touches my heart. Thank you.
I was able to speak first, so I'll, I will be brief. I think my fellow board members have spoken quite eloquently about how this night was moving, and it was important, and it was hard. But I, of course, want to walk away with a couple of short-term goals for the board, because in seeing what we were able to do in changing the discipline policy, and really shifting some practice that we had direct influence over, and that is empowering for us, that we can actually make a difference. So what I'm thinking is, what can the board do, short-term? There are these, this problem is so huge, we have to break it down into steps. And I've been on the blue team with Stacy for Cradle to Care, and watching her stretch herself to take on not only literacy K through eight, but also, how do you become the transition person from early childhood all over the city? And it looks overwhelming to me. And then I look at the high school, and they have Ally Hart, who's the transition coordinator, and she's bringing everyone from eighth grade to ninth grade and helping that transition. But we all recognize from the data, that bridge between early childhood and kindergarten is so critically important. And what I think what we need to do is bring it back to the board and see how we can direct resources or help that transition, because I think that the blue team and Cradle to Care can't do it alone without the board's support. So I would say that's an immediate action item I'd love to bring back, saying that almost everyone on this board echoed how much they thought the early childhood piece was important. I also think the busing, this is something that we've all struggled with. It has been, we've rationalized it, we've tried to do something about it, we've talked about money, we've tried to soften it, but it has been a struggle. And I think we need to bring that back and look at it again. And the third piece, which is just a little thing, is I think this whole phonics thing is interesting. I don't know how we, our new literacy framework addresses it, really in the specifics of it, but it's echoed enough that I think we need to, as a board, sort of, you know, address your concerns, that that piece of literacy isn't being addressed sufficiently. So that would be my summary, and then Paul.
Sure. Let me also echo a deep thank you to each and every one of you, and you all as well as a board, for engaging in this deep conversation. Mr. Robinson put on, in his very interesting history, he, he talked about acknowledging, and the part of the data, and perhaps the magnitude of data. One was wanting to be responsive to the requests that we had, but two is the process of acknowledging where we're at and where we need to go. And we can't ignore that, and I think that's something that just echoes in this room. I think, I made a comment earlier about leaning into the difficulty of the data and, and the information. I think that's also something that we, as senior administrators, but as leaders, and as colleagues, and as educators, have to do, so that we can get to, to solutions. Tracy, as you were just talking, and indulge me for a second, I evoke, I'm a baseball fan, so I evoke, the manager of the Chicago Cubs has a little phrase, that he wears a T-shirt that says, "Do simple better." And when you think about do simple better, when I landed here, the board had a mandate of, of shift the, shift the way we think about suspensions. And, and the man, and the mandate was, "Do it now." And yet, that's easier said than done. We had to really work with our colleagues who are principals, with our support staffs in schools. But if you look at those data and that precipitous, we still have a lot more to do, we have a lot more to do. But that drop says that by doing simple better, by doing something, in the, in the conversation we had last week, and the, I can, you know, thank you Sergio, I closed my eyes, and as I watched the young people who are walking out of the bus into the Lincolnwood School, I've thought about that since, since, I should be thinking about that all the time. But when we talked about it last week, it was really a powerful image for me, and I think for us to think about, what could we do differently, which many, many of you have asked. We've, we, we have a lot of information here, and we can piece it together, and piece it together where indeed there are data, and there are solutions. And, and I want to, I want to push us, because there's, there's lists of interventions that we're doing, but we're, we're, we have an aggressive agenda that we're working on. And the aggressive agenda around the school climate teams, they didn't exist a year ago. And I, and we can be more aggressive. So we're in six schools, why aren't you in 12? You're in 12, why aren't you in, in all 18? I, I will own that. But the, the work that we've been doing, Joyce has been leading this, has been really focused on, on the, the pieces of the puzzle around how do we really change climate? When we think about, again, the suspension policy, John's been working hand-in-glove with the principals, because that's not easy in the day-to-day practice. It's changing a mode of practice, it's, it's being reflective on our practices. And that gets me to something that will be new, is that as we are much more intentional around our equity agenda, which is, again, embedded in the strategic plan, embedded in a lot of what we presented, but as we're, as we pay attention to race, somebody mentioned that too, don't, Mr. Williams mentioned that, as we pay attention to race, and we pay attention to how we think about our practices vis-à-vis race, vis-à-vis as we talk about black children, and we talk about Hispanic children and others. But we, as we really talked about tonight, I think that's also part of it. So I, there's so much brewing in, in my head and in our heads, and I just want to sincerely thank all for engaging in the dialogue, for holding us to account, to holding me to account, and to pushing this for the, so that we can make improvements in the lives of all of our kids, but as we talk tonight, especially the black children who are attending our schools, who, who we, we serve, we want to serve, we want to serve better, and we have to serve better. So thank you very much.